This is the Board of Selectment Town Situate Meeting on Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. I would like to call this meeting to order. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. Because we are working remotely, all votes must be taken by roll call. So I will ask Lorraine to facilitate that.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, we have accepted the agenda. I will note to everyone that we are meeting remotely in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Emergency Mandate from March of 2020. All town meetings will be held remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed live on Situate Community Television Facebook, or you can get the Zoom link on the agenda on the town website and participate in that way. The recording of this meeting will be available on Channel 9 tomorrow, as well as the YouTube Situate Community Television Station. When we get to portions of this meeting that are open for public input, I will ask you to use the reactions button at the bottom of your screen and raise hands. You can, if that's challenging and you take your video off and wave at me, hopefully I'll see it, and we will invite you to address the board. So with that, there's just two things I want to say before we go to Zoom and walk-ins is the board would like to extend its deepest sympathies to the family of our former town clerk, Bernice Brown, passed away recently. She was our town clerk from 2000 to 2012, and her contributions were immeasurable. So just wanted to let the community know of that sad news and extend our condolences to her family. I also want to note two things on the agenda. The 8:40 discussion on the memorial bench has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will not be discussing that. And in its place, we will insert a 10-minute break between scheduled items and our old business, which will be the wind turbine discussion. So just so everyone is aware, we're going to take a little break so we can all refill our coffee cups before the old business is commenced. With that, I will see is there, or any walk-ins or Zoom-ins, as we now call them, that would like to address the board before we commence the agenda. As I said, if you'd like to do that, if you could raise hand in the reactions section, or raise hand, and I can see you. I'm looking through, I do not see any walk-ins. So it's, I will turn this over to the town administrator. It's only Tuesday, and it's already been a heck of a week, so I know Jim's got a lot to update the town and the board about. So Tim, the town administrator, a report please. Oh, you're muted. Jim, start over, you're muted.
That was always with our COVID update. Since last Monday, Monday to Monday, the town of Situate had 119 additional COVID cases. The previous week, we had had 46 COVID cases, so we more than doubled, almost tripled, the number of COVID cases in a week. We had 14 additional cases yesterday, and as of noon time today, we had another 14 cases. I have not got the final number for today, but the last day that was under double digits was Monday, the 28th. Every day since then, we've had double-digit additional COVID cases in the town of Situate, and most of those have been new addresses, not repeat addresses, but new addresses. So we are now firmly in the red on the state's COVID map. We had a 5% positivity rating as of last Thursday. That's up from 3.32 of the previous 14-day period. Statewide, we were 6.9% yesterday for COVID positivity in terms of testing. Because of this, we had several meetings, we had calls with the state, we had meetings here with our internal staff. We are going to be making some changes in our operations to ensure the safety of the residents and of the town hall staff and the employees throughout the town. So effective tomorrow, we will be returning town hall to, by appointment only, for residents. The town hall will be closed, you cannot walk in, you will have to call for an appointment. The library will also be returning to curbside to pick up and delivery. That will be for the normal hours that the library has been functioning, which is about 42 hours a week, so it's a significant increase from what we did in the spring. But we will be back to pick up and drop off curbside at the library. DPW will be making changes to their schedule as necessary to ensure continued operations, particularly at the water plant and the sewer treatment plant. Recreation will be able to continue to offer programs, as long as those programs are able to meet required COVID guidelines. We will be doing this for two weeks until the 20th. In the meantime, we will be reviewing every day our numbers and seeing where they're going, and also the progress of the vaccine. We took these steps very reluctantly. We were very proud to be one of the only town halls on the South Shore that was open to the public. We were one of the only libraries on the South Shore, almost in the entire Commonwealth, that was open for walk-in. But in order to be cautious and to be protective of our staff and the public, we will be rolling those back for two weeks. All employees will be working, they will be in the buildings, so you can contact them by email, you can contact them by phone, I can contact them to set up appointments. If you do set up an appointment, we will be following strict COVID guidelines, including contact tracing information from anybody who comes into the building. And again, that will be starting as of tomorrow. The school department, as you can imagine, is not immune to these numbers going up. The schools announced today that as of tomorrow, the Setuwa Public Schools will be going to a full remote learning model through at least January 21st, which is a Thursday. In addition to that, I believe all athletic programs, including practices and games, will be canceled for that two-week period. So we had talked about if the numbers went up, how this would impact everything we would do, and now we're seeing those impacts. The worst part is, this is not the holiday surge. This is building up to the holiday surge. That will probably not be till next week that we would see the peak of those numbers from the holiday. So, you know, I joke with Drew that I should just give him a black cape, because every time he goes into my office, it's never good news anymore. But the numbers are going to keep going up for the next couple of weeks. We did an email today, email blast, and a post on our social media pages, announcing these changes, asking people to be more safe, more protective, and follow the rules. There will be a very brief 911 call going out tonight, basically saying the same thing, that we are in the red, it is a danger zone, people need to mask up and follow the protocols. So it's going to be a tough couple of weeks. There is some light at the end of the tunnel, there is some good news. The vaccinations are out, starting next week. Our public safety, police, fire, and dispatches will be getting the vaccines either starting Monday or Tuesday. We expect to have those staff, all done by the end of the week, because of the way their shifts work, it'll take a couple of days to get them done. But they will be starting to get vaccinated next week, so that's very good news, to start seeing those vaccinations come out and actually see them in the community. The next large group of Situate at-large, Situate employees would be in Phase 2. Phase, step 1 of Phase 2 is residents over 75, so they'll be the next large group. And then step 2, step 3, I'm sorry, it confused so many steps. Step 3 of Phase 2 would work down into the DPW, the water, the sewer, and teachers. And that's not expected to be until sometime in February, depending upon the availability of the vaccine. But vaccine is coming, we will see vaccinations starting next week for our public safety personnel. That is very welcome, I know they're looking forward to it, and it will be a load off their minds that they'll be vaccinated to protect themselves and their families. Cole Parkway, you'll start seeing work at Cole Parkway next week, the fencing is up, the contract will be starting on Monday to put in some of the preliminary floats and things. That's again, putting the Cole Parkway Marina on pilings, so we'll be able to leave those piers in, I'll have to pull them in and out every year. That project is due to be done, scheduled to be done by the beginning of the voting season. If you out at Cedar Point yesterday or today, you will see that they have started the construction and the installation of the manholes and the main line. We went out there today, it's a pretty good-sized hole. It is very disruptive, people will need to plan around it. Again, if you don't have to go to Cedar Point, please, just don't go out in that area, there's just too much going on. There's plenty of other places to drive and walk and see around town. Residents will have a hot enough time getting in and out without people adding to their problems, without the construction crew having to work and worry about walkers and drivers and bikers. So it's a pretty big construction, if you want to take a ride down, let me know, the holes are massive, and you can see one of the manhole covers right on the island there, that's probably about 14 feet tall, and that's going to get buried, so it's flush with the top of the street. So it's a pretty big project, we ask people to be careful. The sewer department wants to thank everybody for slowing down the disposal of flushable wipes. We are seeing that that is down significantly, it is still happening, it is still a problem. Flushable wipes are not flushable, please do not put them in the toilet, because they do screw up our treatment plant and our pumps. Finally, the bids on the golf course were due tomorrow. However, we did not receive filed sub-bids on two of our sub-bids, that being roofing and HVAC, so we had to instruct the contractors, the general contractors, to carry allowances for those, so the bid date has been extended until the 13th. So we will see that bid next week, and again, hopefully it will be within our appropriation, and we'll be able to get started on the golf course. So that is what I have for tonight. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Jim, appreciate it. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Bedrow? Ms. Curran?
I just have one. Jim, do we have any demographics on the cases, you know, with regards to age or anything like that?
I don't get those breakdowns. What I would see is the total number of cases, and then we get the number of cases who are in the schools, but I don't get any breakdowns beyond that. I could try to get those from Drew, but the case numbers are so high, it's just, they're having enough of a time getting out the numbers and doing the contact tracing without trying to break those down, but it's something we try to do.
So he does all that manually?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd be curious. Okay.
So, Ms. Conley?
Yes, I think, Jim, if you could explain what the positivity rate is, there's a little confusion out in the community about how that is calculated.
So the positive is, there's two, the state has the daily positivity rate.
Something to do with how many people are tested, and then out of that group of people who are tested, how many test positive.
It is the number of positive tests as a percentage of the total number of tests correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Goodrich?
Have we received any guidance from DPH or the state about what our role, either our Board of Health for the vaccine rollout for either Phase 2, 3, or 4 might be, or have they said, oh, we're going to send folks to?
I could talk with Drew, not that I'm aware of as of yet. I was on a call today, mostly they're talking about the Phase 1 rollout. They're very focused on the public safety, and if you've seen the news, there will be regional public safety centers. We are combining with Norwell, Cohasset, Hingham, and Hull for our public safety, to get the critical number of public safety needed to have our own shot areas. But that's what they're working on right now, Andrew, they haven't really gotten us the guidelines as to how they're going to do Phase 2. What we're hoping, and what we'll end up talking about, is to make sure that our paramedics are eligible to give the vaccinations, along with our school nurses, and that'll move things a lot quicker when we have to get to that level. But right now, they're pretty much focused on getting the public safety done.
Got it, okay, all right.
I can get some more information from Drew for you too, Andrew, he's on those calls almost every day.
Okay, yeah, no, that'd be great, just be great to see what our role can or could be.
Yeah.
And can you share that with everyone when you get it, not just Andrew?
Yeah.
The other follow-up question on that is, so does our Board of Health, are they responsible for Situate contract tracing calls, or does that go to the state bank?
They're responsible until such time as they feel that they are overwhelmed, and then they will default to the state.
Okay.
I actually spoke to Drew about that today, and with the recent onset of increased people testing positive, they have been going to the state for some of it as well. Although today, Jim said they had 14 today, and I think her name's Eileen. What's her last name?
Patty.
Yes, yes. She made all 14 today, so it really depends on the volume.
Yeah.
Great, great, thank you for that. Any further questions for the town administrator?
Just.
Oh, Mr. Goodrich?
My last one, have you, does Drew have any also data on whether or not we're, as a town, lagging on testing, like kind of like a per capita, I don't know if other towns have had more. Obviously, our numbers are up, but I don't know if they got a per capita basis where we're testing as frequently as, say, Cohasset or Hingham or other places.
I don't know how the state, what's that, we get total number of tests done, Andrew? We could do the math per capita, I don't know if the state on their database does a per capita, I'd have to look. I mean, they put about 30 pages of information up on all different statistics. I've looked at it on a cap, per capita basis, we've been having significant numbers of testing, but on a per capita basis, I'd have to look for you.
Yeah, it's a simple math, so if it's all in there, I don't mind doing it, so, all right, thank you.
Sounds like a homeschool project. There you go. Any further questions for our town administrator? All right, great, thank you, Jim. We will then move on to our scheduled items, the first of which is to discuss both the naming of the third base dugout new athletic field, and we have, Mike Connor is our Recreation Commission Chair. Mike, if, you're unmuted, yay.
Yes.
If you would like to walk the board through this, I know we got a lot of backup letters of support from this, from various organizations, but I'll let you outline that.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity, and Happy New Year to the board and to the town administrator, Mr. Bedrow, and I'll be quick here, I mean, with J.L., I couldn't go on forever, because I think he was a friend to all. But the week that J.L. passed, I think, when you sort of went anywhere in Situate, you just heard constant stories about the impact he had on people. And we're talking kids 16 years old to people 70 years old, older, younger, it didn't matter. You know, J.L., he served the town of Situate his whole life. It wasn't just a small little window that he did, he did it for over 40 years, 50 years, I guess his whole adult life, in many different capacities. He was actually the first rec commissioner. He coached basketball, football, softball, senior program, senior baseball. But it's actually baseball itself that J.L. will always be synonymous with, and I think exponentially, the impact that he had really almost can't be measured. You know, I think, you know, we could go on forever for, you know, the stuff that he did for that, you know, whether it be raking a field, fixing a field, coaching, it was just, you know, and he was a very humble guy. He was a guy that was not definitely looking for any recognition, and I think that makes this even more, you know, more of a reason to do it. I probably could have got 1,000 letters, but I just got one from the support of the Situate baseball boosters, a high school booster team from Situate Little League, and from the Legion team, and then also the rec commission unanimously fully endorsed the idea of naming the third base dugout after J.L. Again, I know these things are, come up frequently, you know, but obviously, I'll advocate for him any way I can, answer any questions you have, and I could even get more, more letters if need be, because he was a special person that deserves, definitely deserves to be recognized for what he did for this town for five decades, literally.
Thanks, Mike, yeah, the number of people that I think called each board member that say, we got to do something, you know, it was extraordinary, and we do get requests for memorials, but this was definitely.
Any funding for a plaque or whatever the team decides to do, if this goes through, would be paid for by the baseball boosters too.
Oh, okay, that's very good, that's very generous.
Yeah.
So I know that you guys have also discussed this with the school, no, have you talked to the school committee yet?
I have not spoken to the school committee yet. I think when I emailed Ms. Devon, she said that the school committee may want to speak to us also, so.
Yeah, it is, it is our responsibility to oversee the grounds, but it's on a school ground, so that'll be an issue. Does the board have anything they'd like to add about this petition? No, Mr. Vignani?
Sure, I tried to repeat everything that Mike said, but there's not a more appropriate place for J.L. to be than on that home side dugout with all the baseball players in the high school. He has done so much for baseball at every level. Every kid that was ever coached by him just adored him. Both of my boys played for him at high school, Mike's son played for him at high school as well. They actually played for him through Little League and Legion as well. So he was, like Mike said, synonymous with baseball, and not just the coaching aspect, but he was the guy that was out there prepping the field hours before the game so that your team could play, that he wasn't even associated with. He loved to play, he was on the senior, he played in the senior leagues there, and literally maintained every single field of baseball in the town. So he was JV coach, not the JV coach, the assistant coach of the high school team for the last several years, and like I said, all the players adored him. So for him to be in that dugout with them, I think is just very appropriate. So, Mike, I thank you and the rec commission for getting this together, I think it's very appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Vignani, thank you.
Mr. Vignani, would you care to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion.
Unless there's further, I'm sorry, are there any further comments? No?
Let me.
I'm putting him on the spot, he's got to find his backup.
I would like to make a motion, move the Board of Selectmen to support the naming of the third base dugout at the new athletic field in honor of J.L. Murphy, pending the school committee approval.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, is there a second by Ms. Curran? Thank you so much. Any further discussion on this matter? I will ask, I will open it up if there's anybody who has called in that wanted to add anything. You can go to reactions and raise hand. And I'm just going to scroll through, I don't see any. In that case, Mr. Bedrow?
Just not in terms of this particular one, this one's an easy one because of all he did, but we do have, Lorraine's been working on a policy for these types of things, we're going to have to make sure, you know, you don't want to name something after me and then have someone much more worthy, and it's already been named, so we need to come up with how we're going to do this in the future. Again, this is an easy one, it's a no-brainer, but we need to be sure in the future when we start going down these roads that we're really doing it to people who are significant, and we're not going to regret naming something after someone and having someone more worthy later on, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and just expand on that, and we will cover this in a future meeting, is just setting up, so, you know, we do get a lot of calls into the office from people wanting to honor or memorialize their family or loved ones, and the program that has been in place around town is, basically, we need a new list, and so that when people call, we can say, all right, here's what's available, and here's what's appropriate, and here's what it costs, kind of thing. So this is a little different, but I think, yeah, we'll put that on an agenda coming up soon, once we have sort of the homework done on it. Thank you for bringing that up, Jim. So we do have a motion, we do have a second. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you again for bringing it forward, and you can work with our office to just facilitate the logistics of getting that manufactured and installed.
Thank you so much, greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
You, good night.
All right, that will move us to our 7 o'clock, which is an update from the DPW Department. I see Kevin Cafferty, who's our DP Director here. Are Sean and Mike Mark going to be joining us?
Sean is here also.
Oh, okay.
Sean Anderson's also on.
Okay. Oh, Sean, hi. Oh, there you are.
Hi.
Okay, so we had postponed, we had a sewer update, I think, our last meeting, and because of some conflicts with the DPW's scheduling, we postponed this for today. So I will turn it over to Kevin and to Sean.
Excellent, thank you. I'd like to start off just going over some of the water improvement history we've done since 2009. There's been 26.7 miles of pipe, brand-new duct-to-lion Class 52 pipe installed in town. New copper water service connections from the main to the propping line for 1,733 homes. We've installed 233 new Mueller hydrants, supercenturions, if you want to get technical. We've cleaned in line 2.7 miles of water line. We installed a green sand filter on well 18. I'll get into that a little further. We are also in the process of working on a green sand filter for well 17A. We've made improvements to the water treatment plant, such as replacing the chemical feed pumps and tanks, as well as replacing the track vac system. This was done a year ago over the winter, and it was very, you know, made us nervous and, you know, gave us, gave me some gray hairs, I know that. We've removed and replaced the sand filter under drains and changed the sand and carbon for the filtration system in the plant. We also performed a pilot study using potassium permanganate at the treatment plant, and recently we've installed two tank mixers in the bottom of the tank, water storage tanks, which are like giant fans that rotate the water, so it gives us a better water quality as it goes out. So an update on the current work, where we are. The master plan, we met with the consultant on December 22nd to go over the master plan, they submitted the first draft to us, and we had a lot of comments on it, and also some different experiences we received from last summer. So we updated them with all those comments, and they're incorporating it. We should have a document ready for distribution and posting on the website, if we have the capacity to do that by January 15th. That's the plan that we have. The other thing we've been working on is the Dolan Well Field. We've completed initial five-day pump test. The pump test yielded 200 gallons per minute, which was a conservative estimate from the hydrologist. So if, just for an example, if we were able to get 200 gallons per minute, that would yield us 288,000 gallons per day over the course of a year, that could be 105 million gallons per year of water, which is huge for the town. We are also working with them to continue and identify the safe yield, delineate the posed water protection zone, and evaluate all potential impacts in the zone of influence of the well, and that well is off Hollid Street and Country Way. When all the data is completed, the consultant will fill out a BRP WS-19 and submit to the DEP, which the plan is to submit that May 2021. After the DEP approves it, we would be ready to seek funding to go forward and actually construct that well and get that well field up and running. We will require some treatment there, some sort of carbon filter system that we will enact. Well 17, work is proceeding on the building over the winter. They have had several supply interruptions due to COVID-19. The project schedule hasn't impacted it too badly, but we're watching, we're concerned about the main filtration system when that comes in. So far, we've had five pay wrecks, we've paid them about 40%, so they're about 40% complete on that project there. The award date for that project was 6/11/19, and the completion date that they have to be completed by is 12/12/21, so sometime in December would be the drop dead date. We're hoping to get it online sooner, but we'll see how everything goes. Well 18B, which is one of our higher-producing wells, was taken offline. We hadn't been using it as much, because we were getting heavy manganese and iron levels out of that well, and it was affecting Front Street and some of the different areas of town. So when we did the Old Oak Bucket Water Filtration Plant, when we took that offline, we installed some green sand filters there, so that we could run that well to give us an added supply of water. Those green sand filters were temporary in nature, and we're working with a consultant now to make that a permanent feature. So that's going to include setting up some lagoons and being able to backwash that water on a daily basis. So when we were in, when we were doing the work on the treatment plant, anytime we ran that well, we would have to have trucks come over and pump the water out to take the backwash out. We're looking for a permanent fixture now, which was funded at past town meetings, so that we can pump directly into a lagoon and get rid of the backwash. And we're also working with Widows Walk to see if they might be interested in using some of that water, or how that can be used, because it could be potentially used for irrigation. The new treatment plant, an RFP, was issued for an OPM. We awarded the OPM contract to tie and bond. We were in a meeting a couple months ago. A request for qualifications has been put together and is out on the streets now, and we're looking for a designer to come up with a future design for OOB, responses to do at the end of the month. Water projects. Water projects, the town will be bidding two new water projects in 2021. These will include water line replacement on Brook Street, 2,400 feet, Tilden Road, 1,100 feet. That's the section from Brook over. And we're also looking at 7,800 feet on Old Oak and Bucket Road. When we were doing flushing, we identified that water line as in bad condition. As the second project, we will also be looking at Cedarwood Utility Road neighborhood, as well as a lot of the dead ends and the smaller water lines we'll be replacing. The first project will be bidding 2421, and the other project should be bidding 22521. Old Oak and Bucket Manganese Treatment Pilot Program. This summer, we noticed warmer than average temperatures and lower than average rainfall, being in a drought. The treatments saw elevated concentrations of manganese. The reservoir actually, the water in the bottom was colder than the water in the top, was warmer, and it caused a flip, which caused a lot of manganese and a lot of different problems. So we did some jar testing in August and identified a treatment to maximize the raw water manganese removal, which is with potassium permanganate, was identified as the ideal solution. And on August 25th, we obtained approval from Mass DEP to install a pilot potassium permanganate pretreatment program at the Old Oak and Bucket Water Treatment Plant, which is in place now. Flushing, we have an engineered flushing program. The flushing started this fall, but we had issues with water and the drought, obviously, so we couldn't do our full flushing routine. COVID didn't help things. So we're scheduled to hopefully resume flushing 2021 in the spring. And it's all dependent on COVID, water levels, and everything else. The other thing I was going to bring up is Humrock Water Usage. We've been monitoring that. We've installed the two new pressure reduction valves. We believe we're seeing less water usage. Back in 2019, is, you may recall, we did set aside some money to potentially replace the water lines down at Humrock. And that's something we're going to seriously look at, because we're still losing a lot of water out there. The water quantities we use are very significant. And, you know, there is a cost savings if we do a replacement. So we'll be talking about doing an RFP in the future to redesign that, probably in a two-phase process, do north side and then the south side. When we come to the board, typically on all our water projects, we've been using cast iron ducted line grade 52 pipe. What we will probably use, because Humrock is underwater a lot, we'll probably look in, maybe use plastic in these locations, just to avoid corrosion in other inhibitors. The ducted line pipe is really good, and we've had great luck with that. We've had it in service for 100 years in some locations, but plastic might be a better application at this process. We've updated most of the generators on most of the main wells. We've added generators, except 10 and 11, but a lot of the wells, we do have generators. We had an issue with well 19 recently, where we lost a head gasket on one of the generators, and that was covered under insurance. So we have an insurance claim on that, and that's in the process of being repaired. I think I covered everything, and, you know, Sean and I'd be open for questions. Did I, anything I missed, Sean, that you were aware of?
No, I think you got everything. There's quite a lot there.
I didn't want to get too detailed. I didn't want to put everybody to sleep. I know it's a long meeting.
Now, this is important. Yeah, the first thing that I would like to ask, what's your name, Kevin? Is, could you, we did not get, normally we get sort of the notes ahead of time, so we're hearing this cold. Could you provide us with a written summary of what you just gave us? That was a lot to absorb, and I, you know, I know that I'll forget something. And it would be good if we could also have it in, you know, obviously, we don't, if we can, we can pare it down a little so that we can post it for the public, so that they can get the, just sort of the highlights. That would, I think, be really useful for the community. I have a couple of questions, but I'm opening up to the board first, if they'd like to ask any questions from Sean or Kevin. Let's see.
I put him to sleep.
It was so thorough. Mr. Goodrich, would you like to start?
Quick, yeah, quick question. Are there any areas or any data, any technology that you think you might need? Or just really more about data that you wish you kind of had, any kind of spots or areas that you wish you had more information about? Or just around town in general for what's happening?
You know, skater wise, we're weak on skater, and it's something we're working on. We don't have contact between the plant and necessarily the different tanks. The running joke used to be, how would we know when the tanks were full? The guy beside the tank usually calls and said it was overflowing, and that's how we knew to shut the plant down. You know, we're working on electronics. I mean, we've got a long way to go to bring ourselves up to speed in skater. And Sean, I'm speaking for you. You could probably tell some more horror stories. But is, is that the biggest issue, you know, that you think we would have with the water department?
Yes, I hope my volume's okay. My connection's not too good. Excellent. Yeah, one of our problems that we face is, in order to put a skater system in place, we need to first upgrade the electronics inside our stations. They're very antiquated. And we need to upgrade our electrical controls in the stations, install some newer technologies, some PLCs. Then we'd have the ability to incorporate that into a skater system and actually send information through radio waves. I've already done a pest study to make sure it would work back to the treatment plant and collect all that information and gather all that information, so it's at your disposal.
So would it, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. So with those updates, I mean, is it possible to do some of the skater? And whether or not they go 5G or whatever is going to happen before we have a new water treatment plant? Or would it be more cost effective to wait for some of those upgrades? If, you know, if knowing that there's going to be a new plant, I guess.
Yeah, that's a good question. I've really been trying to work on skater, and I'm trying to make it stick to any big project that happens. So with the green sand filter plant, I'm actually going to gain a little piece of skater. I'll have the ability to talk to the new green sand filter plant. I'll have the ability to talk to the rez gate, to open and close the reservoir gate. And I'll also have the ability to see the tank height. So I'll be able to turn that well on and off based upon tank height. And that would be for the first time since I've been in Situate, almost five years now.
Wow. That's great.
Remote control of a well.
Right.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Curran, I saw you leaning forward.
I just had one question. Thank you. Kevin and Sean, when do you anticipate bringing the Dolan Well online? So if everything's being submitted to the DEP in May, are we looking 2022? 2023? Like, what's your estimation?
It's a new well source approval, so, you know, I'm not sure how long the DEP will take with it. They're going to have us do a complete round of testing. And, you know, we're just not sure how long it'll take. If it's going to be, you know, it could be six months, it could be two years. We, you know, it depends on the DEP. Weston and Sampson's working for us on it, and they're the consultants. They've been very thorough so far. We're just not sure with the new source approval, because the person who used to do it at the DEP, who actually approved this project back 15 years ago, his name's Kermit, has since retired. So there's actually a new person in there. We don't have a gauge on how long it's going to take them to do the evaluation and give the approval, if that helps.
Okay, well, I just think, you know, it's up to us to help on that side too, right? That political side, and see how we can move that piece along. So if we moved that along, we need to identify funding too, right? You said, how much, what's your estimation for that?
It kind of depends on what the DEP comes back on that. If we need to do a, say, a carbon filtration system, or would we need a sand filtration system? Do we have to add chemicals? What chemicals do we have to add? We won't be able to price it up until we, till we get all the chemical analysis, and then that's reviewed. And then even after it's reviewed, there will be two or three different decisions on how to make the treatment, and they'll all have different costs associated with them. Does that sound reasonable, Sean? Am I missing anything?
No, you're spot on. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, spot on with uncertainty. Awesome.
That's why I'd answer.
But thank you. Yes, no.
Well, the old rule of thumb was a new source approval would take anywhere from three to five years to complete. Now, into this, I don't know, a year and a half or two, maybe, Kevin, at this point, so.
I mean, I'd hope so. We have a lot of conversation with the DEP. And, you know, I think it's a positive positive for everybody, and I hope they wouldn't, you know, I don't see them trying. Not that they're ever trying to slow it down. They just, they want to make sure every possible test is done. It is, it is a drinking water supply system, so we have to make sure everything's perfect for it, and that'll be the big thing. They may require us to do additional pump tests out there. You know, you just don't know what will be required.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vignani?
Kev, just a quick question on the schedule for flushing the pipes. I know we did a really good job this year and had a big impact on brown water, I believe, you know, one of the components that impacted that. The reservoir's full. What is, what is the plan? Are we still going to go that as aggressively as we did last year?
So we're going to try to do it in the spring, Tony. The biggest problem is if we started dumping the water out now, it creates skating rinks on the road. So what we'll try to do is, you know, maybe late April, early May, depending on weather, we'll start doing some flushing and see how things go. I mean, ideally, you know, I know I'd like to do the entire system and do the engineered flush that we did a couple of years ago, that we had really great results with. I know Sean would also. It's gonna, gonna depend on water supply, weather, and manpower.
Right. But the plan is to go at it as we have last year, particularly in the areas that we may not have hit this year?
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, actually go more aggressively than we did last year, if that's possible.
Any other questions from the board? Kevin and Sean, I have just a couple. I think everybody covered a lot of them. I just had a couple of follow-up questions. So I was just curious, when you did the capacity test for the Dolan Field, when what, like, when was it? Was it during the drought, or was it after we had the reservoir full? Just.
Actually, we did it, we did it twice, since you asked. We did it one time during the drought, and it was sent off to a lab. And that lab, we had the initial results by word of mouth, but then the lab had all their data taken by cyber hostage. So the lab was locked up, and the lab, instead of paying the ransom, paid Weston and Sampson to come back out and redo all the testing, which they finished up, I think, right around Thanksgiving. They went out there and they retested everything. So we actually did the five day pump test twice. And how are my dates on that, Sean? Pretty good?
Yeah, pretty good. So it's, it's, I'm actually really happy that we're going to have two sets of data as far as a pump test goes. We lost all the sampling data, as Kevin just said, DEP invalidated it. So they had no choice but to do it again, but we'll have two sets of data, which is really great.
Oh, good.
And now it's at no cost to us, so it was picked up by the lab.
Okay. And do you have any stats on, you mentioned this, and you may have said it, and I didn't pull it out. On the Humrock, do you have any stats on what water usage was before and after the valve installation? Like, how much it really, can you tell if it helped our?
We do. We have, we have some data. I don't have that data right in front of me. We've, we've been lowering the pressure, and it has helped. But some of the things that we have down there is, we have a lot of leaks, and we've run into some different leaks. And one of the leaks, we, Sean, took care of, I think, in September. There was a significant leak out there that the guys found, but due to the sand, it doesn't percolate to the ground. So we don't know about the leak. We just have complete water, water loss out there in those areas. So sometimes it's not all that, you know, all that clear. It's not just a black and white graph on what the water uses.
Buy and eat.
We know how much we bought, and we know how much we used, and the numbers are staggering out there. What we, our lost water is, is huge out there. And, you know, some of it, you know, we don't know if all the services, there's service leaks beforehand. We were talking beforehand, what we might do is put meter pits out at every house, so there's no meter in the house. So if something is broken off, that it's at least recorded. We can read the meters and know that something's going wrong there, and at least account for the water.
And then the same token, do you, have you had a chance, either of you, to do a comparison to the number of complaints for brown water this year versus last year versus the year before? I know that a couple of years ago, I guess, when, how long has Mark been on board now? I've lost track. Two years?
Probably coming up on it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was one of the things that the board had wanted, was to be able to sort of quantify. You know, it's not perfect. People have to call, but just how that is. Have you been able to do that yet?
For this year, I haven't, if you don't mind me jumping in, Kevin. We had the best spring and two summer. As you recall, at the annual meeting on the ball field, someone actually, you know, stood up and, you know, actually made a point to say that nobody had complained about it. And I think that's what jinxed me. And with the drought and the manganese in the water and it getting through the plant, we just didn't realize it, started to cause the uptick in complaints from July on. Nearly the volume we've seen in past years. And the people have been very patient with us, you know, putting up with the water, because in the summertime, unfortunately, it's the worst time for us to try and go out and do any flushing to help them out. So they, you know, we did whatever we could in terms of bringing fresher water into their area, flushing out their service line, trying to take care of them customer service wise. But we had to explain to them that what we really needed to do was get another second flushing, full flushing of the system to improve the water quality.
Okay, great. That's great. Any other questions from the board? I will open it up to the public if they would like to ask about the, oh, the water, the water master plan you mentioned. You're going to post that on yours. Where does that get posted, you said?
I'm going to see the size of it, and we're going to talk to IT and see if it's even possible to post. But, because it's a significant document, it's probably 400 pages. So I will, I will see what we can do on getting it posted. And we'll figure that out from there. We would post it on the water page, and then I'm sure we would put out an email alert or something to let people know where it is.
Okay, great. All right, the board doesn't have any other questions. I will just see if anyone who is participating in this call would like to ask any questions about the water update. As I said, you can go on to reactions and raise hand feature, or just put your video on and wave me down. Scrolling through. Well, you guys, you must have done such a great job, guys. Thank you for these updates. If no one has any questions, we will thank you for that and move on to our next item.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Good job. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
One thing I didn't mention is, I believe there's two new employees in your department, right, Sean? Newish?
Yep.
Yeah, well, good. Welcome them aboard.
Absolutely.
Okay, so then we will move on. Our next, the biggest portion of this meeting tonight is, we are continuing the review of the proposed fiscal '22 budget. That process, tonight, we have several different departments. We're going to start with Jim Bedrow to review the non-monetary articles. So I will turn it back to you, Jim.
Mute. We had submitted about 33 total articles as of the deadline. I believe we've had one zoning article that's been withdrawn at this point, and talking to you. And talking to you this morning, Madam Chair, I believe the Charter Review Committee will not be going forward with an article at this point. So that leaves us about 31. The first 12 to 14 are almost all in some way monetary articles. The usual ones, budget, capital budget, your enterprise funds, revolving fund consent, and then your C P A articles. They get you to 13 are right there. We have a debt authorization for SocioVotech. That is 14. That's a monetary also, but that will go through our SocioVotech assessment. Chapter 91 approval is normal. We have two local acceptance for veterans. One would be a voluntary checkoff on property taxes on motor vehicle excise tax. That would go to a municipal Veterans Assistance Fund. The town had actually approved filing special legislation, I believe, in 2012. We can find no evidence that it was ever filed. We know it didn't pass. But there is existing legislation that we think we can use that allows us to do that. Another one is filed by the assessors. And that reduces the time that a veteran needs to live in town in order to qualify for the veteran's exemption on taxes from two years to one year. But both things that are designed to help the veterans in town. There's also one from the assessors on deferral and betterments. I will leave it to them to explain it, but it's just a way of collecting and showing we got our betterments. We have a couple of land acquisitions that the board has talked about, potentially a street acceptance. We have three bylaw amendments and I believe four zoning amendments that'll be proposed at this town meeting. And then a couple of easements and a petition article.
All right. And some of those we had postponed from the last town meeting, is that correct? No?
No, we all knew.
These are all new. Okay.
Except for the zoning articles.
Yeah, the zoning was pushed back.
North situ, I don't know whether we actually postponed that or whether they weren't ready with it. I I forget. It's been so many times. It's been up and down.
I I think that was that the planning board felt that there had been too much time elapsed and they wanted to have a public meeting again. And those are being scheduled right now, according to?
That was the signed by law. We had to have a separate, the signed by law had to have a new public hearing, according to council. But the North City Village zoning, that's been put forth a couple of times. I just can't remember whether it actually made the warrant or not, or whether they withdrew it before it got to that point.
Okay. They will. I was, I was speaking with them with planning today and they will be having a public meeting on that anyway. So you can keep an eye out for that. You are in North City and want to know what the proposals are and understand them. So those are coming.
I gotta finish going through a draft warrant with Nancy, make sure we have all the language and then we'll send it out for the board to look at.
Okay.
A couple of holes in it that I gotta fill in. Yeah, so.
Ms. Collin?
Yeah, what's the petition article, Jim?
Petition article has to do with the Water Conservation Mandate Program. They require buildings to have certain water conservation measures in them when they're constructed and other buildings to be retrofitted by a certain period of time.
And the petitioner is who? The Water Resources Committee or?
No, it's an individual.
Oh, okay.
I don't have it, I don't have it right in front of me, but it's an individual. It wasn't one of those. Water Resources does have an article that they're putting forward.
Right.
But it's not that one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the non-monetary articles from the board? Okay.
I just have a comment.
Yeah.
I think we've, we, when we do the final draft of any of these lang, any of the language that is changing, I think it's important to show the red line version because I think we always get ourselves into big debates over nothing because we're not really demonstrating what we're really changing. So if we can just be mindful of that when we get closer to town meeting. I'm just looking at some of the language and I know some of it, you can't tell what changed, so.
Yeah, I mean, some of that on a zoning article, you could have, if you want to show the entire text with the changes, it could run to 10, 15 pages.
Yeah, and and maybe with the zoning, we ask them to give a supplemental, you know, submission, supplemental piece of document that's available for folks instead of putting it in the book, to your point, right?
It's just sometimes it's hard on zoning when you're taking out, you know, overlay, water overlay protection district, when you're taking it out in five or six different places and it's spread out over the entire text. It can be a very long text. But yeah, we can talk with planning board about that. I'm sure they have it. They could provide that as a supplement.
Yeah, I'm even just looking at the mooring change, too. You know, people will really want to understand what, and and I know the changes are very minimal, they're almost nothing. But again, I think we can head off some lengthy discussion.
I second that. Even if we don't have, you know, a copy for everyone, just to have it, if somebody does want to go and see the hard copy, we should have that. Okay. Any other comments or questions about the non-monetary articles? No? Okay. I will see if anyone who is participating would like to ask a question about non-monetary articles on the upcoming warrant. You can raise your hand or on video or put your video on. Okay, I don't see any. So we will move on to tab number 135, which is Nancy Holt to discuss the Finance Director Town Accountant line items. And before you start, Madam Director, I just wanted to remind everyone that this is the sixth year in a row that our finance team has received an Excellence in Finance Award. So congratulations again on that. And 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 to really thank you for the extremely, that all of that talent has been really paid off in putting in the applications for COVID cares, funding, and 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 keeping track of all of that. So thank you. And I will turn it over to you, Nancy, to discuss the Finance Department budget.
Thank you. As I'm the first budget of the night, shall I, Madam Chair, assume that you have read all of my goals, assumptions, objectives?
Yes, we have. As everyone said, it's a very thorough report. And it does contain an overview of all of the departments under which you manage or over which you manage and a discussion of your accomplishments, including your award. So yes, assume we have that. And if you could just give us a general overview of what you think the coming year will bring for your departments, and then we'll look at the numbers. How about that?
Sounds good. I think there's a lot that will take into next year fiscal year that we've learned from fiscal '21 and the pandemic, especially from a finance point of view. And we've dealt with FEMA disasters before, but now we're dealing with a pandemic that went on for a long period in tracking all those costs. So it's providing opportunities for how we can move forward with those types of situations in the future. Also, remote working and having offices that currently all of a sudden dramatically have to close because, or have to go to a remote work environment because of quarantining. And that's been one way to make sure that you have all your procedures in place. So I think there's a lot of things that are silver linings to the pandemic, especially operational, that I certainly will take into the new fiscal year and use to the benefit of everyone, not only my own. The changes in the budget that I want to highlight for the board, the salaries are requested to increase by $9,080. And that would be contractual increases for myself and the three other members of my office. All three other members of my office are still able to get step raises. And we currently have a vacancy. One of, member of my office has moved on to another vacancy in another department. So we're waiting to fill that position. And it is the biennial, it's time for the biennial O P E B valuation actuarial analysis. So there's an additional $10,000 request for that to be done. And other than that, there are no other changes to the budget. So it's an overall request for an increase of $19,080 over fiscal '21.
Okay. That was my question on the budgets. Thank you for answering that. Does the board have any questions on the documentation or the budget? Everyone's shaking their head because you're completely thorough. I just had a question. I just didn't understand. In your accomplishments, you note that there's a new consultant working on design and engineering modeling for the largest of repair projects. And I just didn't understand those words. Could you, could you translate that for me?
Sure. We have Tetra Tech who's working with us to get our our legacy FEMA claims, the old ones that go back all the way to Hurricane Sandy. We then through the FEMA chain to finally get funding for those projects. So things like Third Cliff, First Cliff, Second Cliff, the, those are all legacy FEMA projects.
Okay. Thank you. That I understood. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Nancy on Finance Director and Town Accountant budgets? Any from the public? I'm going to scroll through. I don't see any questions from the public. Great. Then we, gosh, Nancy, that's all you've got tonight?
I'll be around.
All right, great. Then we will move on to tab number 155. And my, oh, there's Mike and Michael Montello, who is our.
Thanks, Nancy.
Sorry?
I just want to say thank you to Nancy. Sorry.
Thank you, Nan.
It was a lot of great work.
We're going to go on to the information technology. We have our Director of Information Technology on board. And I, I will say that your, your work on, it is outlined in, as Nancy said, we have the documentation, the work that you have been doing in in this environment to make sure that our systems are secure and that, you know, our data is protected is extraordinary. So I'll turn it over to you and you wanted to highlight a couple of things and we'll look at the numbers then.
Sure. Well, thank you for having me. In in short, this coming year is focused on a lot of security initiatives. There were some very low hanging fruit that we were taking care of this current year. Next year, one of our large security tools that we have, the subscription is expiring. So we'll talk about how that impacts the budget for next year. Actually, moving into the budget, the the overall change to the technology budget request is is really divided into three groups. We have existing services or existing contracts, annual increases to those. And some, some I'm anticipating going up, some I'm anticipating going down. The net change I'm expecting to be an increase of like $36,000 or $3,700. Then we have maintenance that we need to add, maintenance and subscriptions that we need to add to services that we purchased or already invested in over the last year. For example, we put a new fiber network in around town. Along with that came with network switches at all the different buildings. You know, that's $4,800. We're hoping to put the new permitting solution in. Actually, we're not hoping we are. Contracts have been signed. Funds have been approved. So there will be annual maintenance fees associated with that. Wireless access point subscription. So we're putting wireless access points hopefully reimbursed with COVID funds. But there will be some annual maintenance fees for those. And then one of the larger increases would be annual maintenance fees associated with the security project that the town approved a year and a half ago? Yeah, a year and a half ago. So all of that is an increase of approximately $37,000. And then there's the new requests. The new requests, as I had just mentioned, one of our security tools that we have is expiring, the software subscription is expiring. I'm looking to bring in a different tool, it's more advanced, more and way more capable than what we currently have. There are two different pieces to that. I don't want to get into too many details about the security, the specific security tools. But that and along with additional backup solutions, backing up email, that's an additional 3100, I'm sorry, 31,000 requests. And those are the three different areas of increases that, oh, excuse me, one more, in a $10,000 increase in I T capital outlay. So we're slowly trying to increase this. If you think about it, we have over 200 computers across the town. If we try to, try to say, if we say we have a five year life expectancy per computer, we're trying to replace 20% a year. The funds that we have currently just don't, they just don't support that. So over time, we're trying to build the I T capital outlay up so we will be able to support that. That said, some of the COVID relief funds were a huge help to us this year because we were able to replace, I think it was somewhere around 38, 38 notebook computers and and also put those computers in the hands of people that can now work remotely. So.
Great. So to just recap, so if people don't have it in front of them, last year the budget was 530, I'm going to round, $538,000. And the recommended budget this year is 615, which is an increase of 70, about $78,000 of which you've just explained what those costs are. I I commend you and Jim and Nancy for prioritizing these improvements in the budget because, you know, they're, they're necessary to, for the whole machine to work well. So thank you. The board have any questions about the I T budget or the goals outlined by the department? Mr. Vignani?
Mike, just a quick question. Are any of these lines associated to to the schools as well? Like, for instance, backing up of emails, is that, is that just town email or is that school email as well?
Just town. School has, yeah, they have a different, different technology they've chosen to use, different, and the schools get a lot of it for free because they're in education. Microsoft gives a lot of free licensing. I think they're now Google, or they've just recently been converting over to Google classrooms. And there are different incentives for those, as far as I'm aware. But it's different technology generally.
So all of the equipment and all of the services and the additional $67,000 of, I think you said almost half of it was backing up email, is all just town related?
Correct. The the backing up of email is actually only 5,000. It is backing up cloud based email or email to our new cloud based email, which is Office 365, which the town approves in November, our November town meeting a year ago. That was Office 365. We're now backing that up to the cloud. That's 5,000. And then the rest of it is security focused.
The rest of the additional money?
The rest of the 30,000. So there's $24,000 for technology security.
Okay. So of that, of that $67,000 increase in technical services, 20, 24,000 is is the security feature. 5,000 is the backup of the emails. What's the other large component there?
Approximately 3,700 is for existing contracts, annual increases in existing contracts. And 36,000, almost 37,000 for maintenance for for new technology that the town approved or implemented last, this last fiscal year, the current fiscal year. It's a, you know, the fiber network switches, permitting solution that we just approved. And the big one, the end of security system maintenance, the physical security cameras and card access.
So essentially, they gave us the first year for free and then second year it's incrementally higher?
Correct. We we were able to include the first year within the initial purchase that was approved at at the town meeting or whatever period, however those projects, these individual projects were approved. We got the first year included and now these are the annual reoccurring maintenance.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board for Mike? Everyone's shaking. Everyone did a great job with their presentations, so I will, oh, Mr. Goodrich, sorry.
Just real quick. So when, when should we expect the new, the permitting software to go live approximately?
Yeah, so we're going to start bringing it on by, by department by department. And with, right now, the initial thought was that we were going to try to bring building department up first and then, but we've actually just very recently changed that. The fire department's burning permit season starts the 15th. And we want to bring that module online as quickly as possible. And that way, you know, for the whole purposes of online permitting, it reduces less people having to come into the public safety complex to get the permits and make the payments. So we're really rushing to get that in place. And then we're going to focus back on on the building department. And really, the timelines are really going to depend upon the individual departments and their available bandwidth and how they want to craft the overall solution. I mean, this is a workflow solution. So they basically have to say this is how we want it to work. So that's going to be the the dependency of time.
That's great. Yeah. I mean, it looks, the software, it looks amazing. And for the end user, too, and the residents, and hopefully they should see a lot of benefits. So thank you. And hopefully they should see a lot of benefits, so thank you. It's gonna be, I think it's gonna be great.
Yeah, lots of positive feedback on this particular software solution that, from other towns that are using it. I'm pretty excited about it.
Great, alright, any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public on our IT budget for the coming year? I don't see any hands raised. Again, Mike, great strides, thank you so much and looking forward to, I mean, your services, I should have noted at the top of your presentation is another COVID-related yeoman's work is all of our employees that had to go to remote work and all of the tech issues that we all know, like this meeting right here, all fall on your department and your shoulders and you've done an amazing job, so thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Everyone's nodding and waving.
Hey, he's not on a tropical island doing this remotely.
Great, yeah, we're gonna come join you after this. Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, now we're gonna move on to the small budget. Under tab 210, we have Chief Thompson and Deputy Chief Seaverman with us to review the police budget. And yeah, I mean, I think the theme on all of our comments are gonna be, what an extraordinary year and all of our departments have had to step up in different ways. And you guys, you didn't have to fix the computers, but you certainly had to address a lot of challenges. So I will turn it over to you Deputy, or to Chief and we'll dive into, and as you said, we have, I have to say, your department overview and your candid remarks about, you know, what's important and what's happening is extremely thorough. And if the board will indulge me and Mark will allow me, there was a sentence in your identified risks and challenges that I thought would be good to share with the community. So would anyone object to me quoting from this? It's a public document, so you can all look it up. But under this, it said that in the, it is the department's responsibility to hire the best candidates to serve within our community. We must recruit officers that can police professionally in an increasingly violent and divided society while compassionately and comprehensively serving every member of the community. As an agency, must work to strengthen our relationship with our residents, building trust in what we have established over the years and continuing to ensure transparency in our actions. And I just thought that that was indicative, this entire report of the thoroughness and thoughtfulness that you guys put into creating your budget. You know, the numbers are the numbers, mostly it has to do with salary. And we will discuss those of course, but the work that you guys do and the way that you've thoughtfully approached the challenges, I just want to commend you guys. Now I'll turn it over to you, Mark, thank you for that.
Thank you, I really appreciate those words and I know the department does as well. That's really something that I think will really be focused on in the coming year. We have been in the past and certainly this year has highlighted a lot of the good work that's gone on. You know, not to go through everything that you've seen in the packet there, but certainly a couple of things that we'll focus on for the upcoming year will be our policies and procedures. It will be officer wellness and development. Staffing comes underneath that and COVID comes underneath that. And COVID, I don't think is, you know, that's gonna continue to be the specter that it is, so we'll continue with that. In staffing, that remains a focus for us. So keeping our eye on all the employees that we have here, making sure that we're developing them, making sure that they're doing well, whether it's through COVID or just handling anything else that goes on. We're doing a lot with the ICP One Mind Campaign, mental health training for our officers, both internally and externally. So just focusing on that development. And then policy and procedures, it's something for the past couple of years we've had in our goals and objectives. It's something we continue to work on to get towards accreditation. And that now becomes front and center even more with the police reform bill that just passed. So that as we look into FY '22, we've set ourselves up to be in a good place, but that will really be a heavy focus for us. So as we get into the budget, as you would mention, we do have some increases over last year. We're up $106,800. That is due in large part to, as you mentioned, the contractual increases from year over year. If you recall also, last year we had a cut of just over $50,000. So it was basically putting that back in and also some other contractual pieces beyond personal services where we have increases from software that we use to manage our records management in CAD. And that is included in our budget but covers not only the police department but also Communication Section and Fire as well that uses that same software. So those were the couple of increases that go in there that give us the overall net increase over last year.
Great. Does, yeah, we can dive into all this. Did, Deputy Chief, do you want to add anything before I open it to the board?
No, I think you covered it all.
Okay. Would the board like to address any of the presentation or the budget? Oh, I saw Tony first, sorry, then Karen.
Okay.
Just one quick question, Mark, for Allison. I noticed more than half of your increase is equipment. So your budget is literally, you know, level funded from the prior year. Is there anything specific with the extra $50,000 of equipment that you're looking to get?
The, we had a cut last year of a cruiser, so we lost a cruiser out of our budget last year with that reduction. So basically it's putting that cruiser back in. So each year we do our purchases through that equipment line. Last year we took a cut and did not purchase a cruiser. So with this year, we're basically just looking to reinstate that into the budget. So while it appears to be an increase, it's really just bringing us back to where we have been in years past.
Yeah, I see that now. Great, thank you guys for all the great work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Connolly?
I maybe have a funny question, Mark. What, do we give out speeding tickets in town and where is that revenue accounted for?
It all goes back into the general fund. So whether it's a speeding ticket or anything that's under, you know, master general law, chapter 90, or our parking tickets, our parking ticket revenue actually was up from about $34,000 last year up to I think over $67,000 over this year. So we had a dramatic increase on our parking ticket revenue, but that all goes back into the general fund.
So in other words, when you have the chart that says description of revenue, there's no line item in there because it goes somewhere else, is that?
Yeah, I think Nancy might be able to tell you exactly where the money's going to, but it doesn't come back to us.
Well, maybe it should, anyway.
But that actually, that we did have a little increase because we needed a couple extra parking ticket books this summer. So we had some additional expense there.
If that, I have to ask, is that because enforcement's up or because people just aren't paying attention and following rules?
I think it's a combination of things. We had a really good group this summer that went out there and made sure we were really addressing things. But as you know too, I think this summer we were incredibly busy on our beaches and along the waterfront areas because people weren't necessarily traveling and they were getting out with COVID. So I think there were a number of reasons why we saw that increase.
Other questions from the board?
I just have a question, Chief. Where would we see in here sort of your plan for any additional training or enhanced training with regards to, you know, diversity and sensitivity in the community? You know, it's top of mind, I know Amanda's gonna be joining us moving forward, but wondering if there's anything outlined in your expanded community collaboration engagement section that includes that?
Yeah, this really is between that but also between officer wellness and development. And you're somewhat, I think, creating a bit of a segue to talk maybe a little bit about the police reform as well. A lot of our training comes through in that regards from the MPTC, which is the statewide training committee. So we have 40 hours of in-service training each year. So we're anticipating that we'll be seeing a lot of training coming down that pipeline, which will get into that type of diversity training that you speak of. Officer wellness under that category, you've highlighted the One Mind Campaign, mental health awareness and those type of things. So that CIT training is very specific in terms of looking for how officers respond to scenes, how they can de-escalate. So that's important there. But also then, as you say, to the community collaboration, we're looking at a number of things, whether it's through the PCO hub, through its R-Span, or things that we're doing to community outreach that will try to do that. So it's really gonna be a multi-pronged approach from what we're doing internally, how we're working externally with, like I said, the mass training committee and what that will look like. So it'll kind of be across the board, we'll see a lot of things come down.
Okay, great.
And then Mark, town-wide training that wouldn't be specific to the police department in those areas comes out of my training budget.
Right.
Those are the additional money.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted, I noticed that the police detail number in revenues is down considerably. I know we're only sort of halfway through the year, but is it because of the lack of special events or?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can see probably a number of different things as far as why that might flux in terms of where projects are right now. I think right now we're going pretty hard with, you know, the project down on Cedar Point and things. So I imagine from a timing standpoint, we'll probably see some ebb and flow on those things.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Great, Mark, you did touch on it briefly, I just wondered, I mean, your budget was prepared before the police reform legislation did pass. Are you comfortable that, given the new mandates in that legislation, that this budget is gonna be, be able to support that, support you guys to meet those new requirements? Have you even had time to think about it?
No, all of the above. I think that the budget that we have now will support us as we go into FY '22. But I think with the police reform legislation that's gone in, there are an awful lot of unknowns that we still don't know. You know, with the governor's bill that went through with those couple of amendments, it really pushed things forward, so we're not seeing things until July 1st. There's a lot of work to be done from the post and from MPTC as far as what things are gonna look like, what the standards are gonna be, what training's gonna get to, and what some of the requirements are gonna be that are gonna come down to us. So in terms of some of those things, we're not gonna know for a little while, so we'll work to get through them. There are things right now that we'll start to work from an administrative standpoint with our policies, with some of the things that we're gonna have to do to gear up for what post requirement's gonna be in terms of certification for officers and certifications for the department. So there will be administrative things that come along there, but right now it's a lot of unknowns. One of the other things that's a change that again is still to be determined is MPTC, which is the Training Committee, and as they work with posts on this, what it's gonna be for certification, particularly with regards to the reserve and intermittent program. That's a place that in time as it evolves, situat, like a lot of communities, particularly coastal communities, rely heavily on the reserve intermittence for our seasonal work to help augment what happens in the summertime. But it's also how we bring officers into the system and how we ultimately make full-time officers. So as changes start to happen with that, that might have a really dramatic impact to staffing, recruiting and seasonal work. But again, there are some question marks there for what that will really look like. And that will be hopefully a bit of a phased approach. So as those changes start to happen, we can gear up as we get into '23 and '24 and be prepared to handle anything that comes along with that.
Okay, great. And did I see that there's, speaking of new recruits, you've got three going to, three new full-time going to the academy? Is that, did I read that right?
So we had Officer Morgan Billings just graduated from the academy earlier, December 30th. He just completed the academy. We have two other officers, Officer Jeff Radding and Arrow Lamont, who will be heading off to the academy at the beginning of February. And then we anticipate probably not too far in the distant future, we'll have a couple more getting geared up to go. So we're working through our staffing and the academy is doing an unbelievable job with COVID. You know, it's definitely been a moving target for us and for the academies as they try to get these different classes through. And they did an unbelievable job getting Officer Billings' class through so that they could get them graduated on time, even with the stops and starts of COVID. So a lot of excitement there, but it's an interesting time.
Yeah, great. Great, well, yeah, it's been quite a year of changes of personnel and you guys have transitioned into your roles very well and, I mean, talk about jumping into the fire. It's been quite a year, so the board thanks you for all of the above on that. You know, you know what you guys have been doing. Is there any other, you're welcome. Are there any other questions or comments from the board to the police department?
I just think for people watching, Karen, they should be aware that in probably one of the years with the most upheaval that we've had between the pandemic and everything else that's going on in the town and in the state and the nation, we had a complete change in our command staff in the police department. It was seamless, no one even knew that it happened. And really, they've, as you said, they've come in, they've done a tremendous job. It's great working with Mark and Allison. I do give Allison the business every now and then about homeschooling because she and my wife have the same frustrations. But really, you know, we put in a brand-new command staff and it has been seamless in terms of the operation of the police department and they've done a fantastic job. And you can just tell by the presentation of the budget. You would know that this is the first budget that Mark's presented as Chief of Police, that Allison's presented as Deputy Chief. It's just like they've been doing it forever. It's really a compliment to them for the work that they've done down there in running that department and the work that the men and women of the department have done in dealing with what's going on and the change and everything. So can't say enough for them and the way they've handled this over the past. How many months has it been, Mark?
I don't know, we're coming into seven months, I think, so. Thank you, I really appreciate that, but I think you really, you hit on it too, that it's really the men and the women in the department that are really just carrying it. They make this incredibly easy to go along and get through this year. So we certainly appreciate that, the command staff here is awesome, but it's everybody who's coming in every day and doing things.
Agreed, alright, thank you so much. I will go to the public, if there are any questions or comments about the police department fiscal '22 budget. Is your opportunity to raise your hand? And I'm scrolling, I see nothing, another wonderful presentation. So thank you for coming in and be safe out there.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, great job.
So then, that will take us to our other Public Safety Department. Chief Murphy is standing by to give us, which is tab 220 for the board of the fire department budget. And I just, and just before we jump in and, I don't know, Chief, if you were on earlier, we're, we have all of the documentation, we have all of your background, so we don't need to go through in detail, but we want to get some of the highlights out so people are aware. And then, and then of course we'll touch on the budget, but your budget as well is mostly personnel-related. But I did want to start by thanking your department and your leadership. Your guys and women are out there answering medical calls every day. And you don't know if it's a COVID emergency, if the person is sick with something else and you gotta deal with, you know, all of those precautions. And so on top of the extraordinary work that your department does anyway, you layer on the COVID and we just can't thank you enough for managing the staff so that they can stay safe so that they can help our residents, so, an amazing year. So with that, I will turn it over to you. You have outlined your goals and challenges and accomplishments. So if you'd like to give us the overview, that would be great, and then we'll jump into the numbers.
Thanks for that, Karen. Yeah, everything's been heightened this year for everyone, but especially the paramedics and EMTs going to these homes, not knowing what they're getting into. So everything's assumed COVID and they go in with that mentality and they've done a great job and stayed healthy and done a great service to the town. So I do appreciate the comments for our firefighters. Going into my budget, it's basically, aside from the anticipated COLA of just under $47,000, the balance of change is about $1,722, just some miscellaneous adjustments according to the CBA, to the contracts. So some adjustments in education, a little holiday due to the anticipated COLA increase. So really a nominal flat level numbers budget for this year.
And just so people know, last year, I forgot to, it was the police department, but the, last year the budget for the police department was $52,259,000. This year, the recommended budget is $53,308,000 and in terms of, and almost entirely because of steps and salary.
Correct, yeah, it's a $48,700 overall increase, just over one and a quarter percent.
Okay. And your goals, you've highlighted, of course, you're gonna get the Humrock, if we can ever get the bids done right, we're gonna do a Humrock station.
Yep, that's moving forward, the contract's been signed, I believe. So we're anticipating construction of the apparatus bay internally over the winter and hopefully April 1st starting construction on site.
Okay. Because I, I'll defer to the board, are there any questions or comments on the goals or the budget? Are there any questions or comments on the goals or the budget for Chief Murphy? Mr. Vignani?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. First, I want to start you off with another one of the many compliments I get from your department, from the service of your department, from citizens every year. Got another one just the other day where your team went in and really made a resident feel wonderful, you know, in a very precarious situation. So I, I can't tell you how many times I hear this over the course of a year. It's just, uh, you don't hear all of them and we do hear them, so, you know, you guys do a great job.
Thank you, Tony.
So just want to pass those along. The only question I have is, great job with your budget. It's, like you said, literally flat. Even the, even the mandatory pay increases are nominal. What, what is the staffing for your department this year? I meant to ask the police as well.
Right now, we've actually, in a tough environment to get paramedics. We were able to get three paramedics hired in the past year. So right now, we have one other one we just hired, went to the interview process before the holidays. So net-net, we're down, we have four vacancies and they have two personnel at long-term injuries. So one of those two will likely be coming back soon, hopefully, and the other one probably will not be coming back due to his injuries. So, but in net-net, we're above four down right now. We do have a new test coming out for civil service, which we've been waiting for, for quite some time. That's going to be coming out to mid-late February. So a new list of those who weren't on the list before but got their paramedic in the last couple of years. So I think everybody's sort of, of waiting for that, that gun to go off to start to try hiring paramedic.
So what is, uh, what's in the budget right now? Are those four, those four positions are in here and need to be filled?
Correct, they're funded, Tony. And so the, the goal is to try to get those four vacancies filled this year. Again, we were able to get three last year and one more at the end of the year. So if we can, we had one more retired back in December, we had a firefighter retire December 23rd. So we, we have another personnel coming on. I just got his appointment today for the Fire Academy, which is May 10th. So again, interviewing in December, getting a Fire Academy date in May. Still about a four-month lag between the Academy date and, and getting hired.
Right, and these numbers overall look pretty level, like forty, it's always somewhere around the forty numbers and that.
Yeah, we have four firefighters and we have four lieutenants and four captains, the deputy, myself, and, and have been told. So they're basically forty-eight on the floor.
Okay. Great, thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Karen? Mark? Me? Oh, sorry. So just as a follow-up, because I, I, huh. Where are the open positions indicated on the detail? Am I missing something? Yeah.
They're on the main, they're on the main personnel sheet, you'll see four vacancies there.
Oh, here we go, you have two sheets, that's what I missed, okay.
Yeah, this is the first sheet, the second sheet. So they're all on the first sheet, the four vacancies. There's one on there, Barbara Zotta, who retired back in December 23rd. And we just hired another firefighter, paramedic from Norwell, uh, lives in Norwell and familiar with Situit. And he's going to be starting again, uh, probably in April, the Academy, May 10th.
Thanks, sorry, I was looking at the summary sheet.
Yeah, so like I said, with, 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 like I said, the town, the paramedics are in high demand. So we're just trying to move forward as quickly as we can. I know the last person we hired had three different towns offering jobs and he came to Situit, which were fortunate, you know, we, we do have, uh, you know, when our new public safety complex and, and what we're doing in town and having a, a department of our size does help. I know they look at very, a lot of different things now, they're asking for contracts, which before was unheard of, but that's, that's the deal today. But we're doing the best we can to, to continue to hire and get aggressive with that. And we've had a pretty good year with the existing circumstances for, for basically a lack of paramedics.
Right. Okay, um, I have a question. One of your goals is, is, is being ready, if we need a shelter, to, to open up a shelter in, during the pandemic. I assume that that's long, that's well on the way, right, of getting?
Yeah, so we've actually gone out there with our shelter team, Karen. We've gone out to the high school, into junior high. Typically, we've used the cafeteria at the high school for our main, for our main shelter. We went out there and measured everything out. We can actually get thirty-two personnel in there. So the library is a potential expanding capability over there. We're looking at the high school gym also. I think the junior high is set up much better for a shelter, but unfortunately, a lot of the stuff there is not on generator. So again, generated issues there will preclude us, prevent us from going over there during a power outage. It's great, it's set up great for, um, the whole space over there, it was just ideal for a shelter. But again, some of the heat over there is not on the, on the generator and some of the kitchen equipment is not on the generator. So we're going to continue to use the high school and expansion capabilities, it's probably the lodge gym. And, and with a little bit of work to do on that. But we've met with Bob Dillon. And we've talked with the, um, the, the food service people that they would actually have box lunches, so we don't have buffet lines, stuff like that, that we can't, can't do as, right now. We've actually got a grant working with Chief Thompson to get partitions, to separate the sleeping areas for people that would need to be in the shelter for, for longer than a day or two. So we've also acquired through a grant through CARES, a thermal imaging camera. As people walk in, it's going to give a full scan to make sure you do not have a temperature. It actually has accountability capability, so we actually can see this person here comes in and out, we'll know who it is, face, facial recognition. So we know that we basically don't want to put anybody sick with the people that are healthy. So we want to make sure we have good separation there and accountability there. So, but those are some of the, you know, improvements that we've done to prepare with COVID.
Okay, hopefully it's completely unnecessary, but obviously we also will have our, at some point, our senior center's going to be coming online. And that it was, you know, partially designed so that we could pick up the slack on that, so.
Correct, we're looking for.
I hope we don't need to use any of it.
That would be great, Karen.
We don't have to have a shelter operation this winter with COVID. It will be difficult at best.
Yeah.
To operate a shelter with COVID. So we're just, we have a plan, we just hope we don't have to execute it all.
Yeah, excellent.
We have a great shelter team that's working on that, so they're, they're very aware of the challenges and, uh, and always looking for Plan B. So we've met with them several times and gone out to the sites and, and made sure we know what we have.
Okay, terrific. Any other questions from the board for Chief Murphy? Ms. Conley?
Um, on another revenue question, Chief, I see that the ambulance revenue is down significantly, at least it's not. I'm just asking for an explanation. I know we're only halfway through the year, but it looks like it might not keep pace with prior years. Is that something to do with COVID that people are not calling ambulances?
It is, Karen. That actually numbers through November 1st, so it's the third of the year. But we did have a lot less people going to the hospitals. You remember, you see it in the news that people weren't going to the hospital unless they were extremely sick. Even many that were sick, they didn't want to go to the hospital. A lot of times we go out there and see them at their homes, evaluate and, and, and they, you know, just, they just felt reassured that we, we, we checked on them. But a lot did not go to the hospital this year. It's getting back to somewhat more normal now. People are getting their procedures done, people are going to the hospital, a little less anxiety right now than there was in the spring. But we do anticipate a lesser revenue. What number, I don't know yet, see what the second half of the year brings. But we do anticipate, last couple of years, we averaged about $950,000.
Yeah.
For ambulance service, and then we do anticipate that being lower than that this year.
Another COVID thing.
Yeah, there's many variables to that.
And one other question, what's the difference between a paramedic and an EMT?
So everybody has to become an EMT first. So an EMT basically, we can do basically external, like, you know, slings, stuff like that, basic stuff. Basically, when you get to an intermediate, that's sort of in-between a paramedic and EMT, and a paramedic can basically start IVs. They have to, uh, they have to know all the medications and drugs that are on the ambulances. So the big thing is invasive, they can actually, you know, start IVs. And the biggest part of that is the medications and using the, uh, the more advanced defibrillators and Zoll monitors to monitor the people that are sick. So it's, it's basically, EMT's about a six-month training, paramedic's about a year and a half. So before they even get here, they, they have about two years of education beyond whatever they may have for another education coming in the door, and they're very high in demand.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, at the risk of being melodramatic, the difference between an EMT and a paramedic could be someone surviving and not.
Yeah.
There's a lot of work that a paramedic can do in the ambulance as opposed to an EMT. It's a world.
Yeah, and, and these days with ambulances being back, I mean, the stories out of Los Angeles, they're terrible with ambulances. You know, and if you don't have a paramedic, you're in big trouble, so.
I mean, as a chief, paramedics, we are being as aggressive we can. We will have an interview for a paramedic who has just come from an interview in Hingham. And when he finishes interviewing with us, he's going to Moshfield, and they're doing it in Moshfield, because everybody's in the same boat in trying to hire them. So it, it has been a challenge, but, uh, you know, Chief Murphy and Al have done a fantastic job. We got three last year, it was amazing. The Fire Department really is, is our point right now on COVID. And, you know, the men and women in the Fire Department, I mean, every day, log in, do their job, they're doing it very well, under a lot of pressure. So I'm, I'm very excited for them to be in line next week for the vaccines. But, um, you know, again, you see the ambulance going by, but you don't realize how much work and how much stress it is on the, the men and women operating that. So they've done a really, really good job during the pandemic. I just hope we can get too fully staffed at some point in the near future.
That applicant will come here, we're, we're much better. Much better department than those other towns.
We hope to think so, we have a good reputation and, uh, you know, we hear that from some people at, at the hospital and they ask questions. And we're glad, like I said, a good example was the person we just hired. He went ahead, as Jim said, had three interviews. And, um, you know, I thought we were going to lose him, he said, I want to come to Situit. I says, you know what, sign right here, so come on in. And get him in, and we get him an Academy date early, so we're trying to move everything as stream as we can. We hire him a month or two before they go to the Academy, get some internal training and to make sure we can maintain them. But again, our medics do a great job, our EMTs do a great job in, in both fire, EMS, whatever the call is, they step up, get it done. And, uh, you know, during this pandemic, I got to commend them all, they just, they, they've not complained, they've, they've stayed healthy. The cleaning and the, and the vigilance they have to have to maintain their own health, so again, help others has been outstanding.
Right.
One more thing, Karen Conley, through the end of December, we are right on about our ambulance revenues.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Great, all right, thank you, Chief. I, uh, if the board doesn't have any other questions, I'll see if any of our guests have, uh, would like to ask a question about the Fire Department Fiscal '22 Budget. I'm scrolling through, I see no hands raised. So thank you so much. Please send our thanks back to the entire department for just, you know, showing up every day during this crazy time.
Thank you, thank you very much, happy and healthy New Year to you all.
To you as well.
Thanks, Mur.
Thank you.
All right, and to round out our discussion of public safety, we have tab 230. And is Barbara DeWolf on our call?
She is.
Okay, Barbara, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there you are, okay, great. So Barbara heads up our Public Safety Communications Department. And as she noted, they are fully staffed, as she noted in the, um, in her report. And I'll get to, I'll let you, and then, uh, and, um, and as with the other budgets, the changes in the numbers are pretty much consistent with changes in salaries that are contractual. So Barbara, I'll, I'll let you tell us about the work of your department from last year and what you're looking forward to this year.
Um, one of our major challenges last year was to make sure that we were able to get fully staffed. Luckily, we have been able to do so, hopefully that maintains. The challenge that we were facing a little bit was, uh, keeping up with that with the COVID and training with all of the state changes that we keep getting handed every day, sometimes every week, with the new information.
Great, yeah, it's been, uh, do you get support from the state at all on that? Or they just send you the info and you have to push it out?
They usually just send us the info. Chief Thompson or Chief Murphy will supply us some of the information that they receive as well to help keep us all updated.
So the budget last year, the, uh, but department budget was just over $600,000. Am I in the right thing? Yes. And this year's recommended budget is $631,000, almost entirely, well, yeah, entirely due to, um, uh, changes in, in salary bumps. Yes. Does the board have any questions for Barbara? I'm seeing head shaking, no. Comments? All right, Ms. Conley?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask Barbara, you know, it, it, the Joint Dispatch is still somewhat new to Situit. I'm just, from your point of view, is it working well now? It was a little difficult, I think, to begin with, but from your point of view, how is it going?
I think it's, um, it's transitioning nicely. We have, all, all the staff is cross-trained, so they can do police or fire. You know, we're not just based off of one. So no matter what you're calling for, whether it's a, you know, a police need or a fire need, everybody's able to assist you.
That's great.
Yeah. Cuts out that little middle person.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, if, if, if I recall, having to transfer phone calls at some point.
Yeah, that was a pain, because if it, before the 911, it would go to the police. And then if it was for the fire, you would have to transfer it to them. You always risk losing the call potentially.
Right.
Now, that's not happening.
That's great.
Yes, thank you very.
Thank you. It's not an easy job.
Thank you.
Great, um, any other board questions or comments about Public Safety Communications? Seeing none, um, just the, yeah.
And Karen, you can't go, but once COVID's over, I would encourage the board to spend some time in the dispatch during your busy time and just see the amount of pressure they deal with, how well they deal with it, the professionalism that they have. You can't go now because we won't let you in because of COVID. But it is something, if you ever get the chance to go up and watch them operate during some busy times, they really, really do a tremendous job under a lot of pressure. So I'm glad we've been fully staffed, that was a big problem last year. We addressed it through the contract. And I think we're, we're fully staffed and I think that's really helped with a lot of the pressure that they were feeling to cover shifts.
Right.
So we can keep them fully staffed, they're doing a fantastic job.
Well, I think having to move into the new building and learn new equipment and it's, it's been an interesting couple of years, but I think it was worth doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Yeah, I, I've, and before COVID, I've been there a couple of times, not even in a crazy time, and I broke into a cold sweat watching them. So thank you for all that. I don't see any hands raised from the public. So if there are no other questions, we will thank you for your presentation and your budget and, uh, and look forward to the coming year.
Thank you, have a nice one.
Thanks, Barbara. Okay, cooking along, we have Veterans, Dawn Knapp, that would be tab 543, our budget books. Dawn Knapp is our Veteran Services Department Head. Dawn, are you on?
I am on.
There you go. Hi, how are you?
Great, great.
And I think, I think every one of these just starts with, what a year you guys have had. And I know you'll, you'll, you'll get into a little bit of the changes that had to, to, to service vets, what had to happen. But I want to thank you for, you know, pivoting on, on, on things like the, you know, the, the public observances of holidays and being able to, you know, work with Seth Pfeifer and the cable people to do virtually. I think people really appreciated that. So thanks for trying to figure it out, but I'll let you tell the board and the public just sort of, you know, the kinds of adaptations you've had to make, and then we'll talk quickly about the budget.
Yeah, so again, adding on to that, I, I do, I really want to thank Seth in Situit TV. He's just been outstanding. You know, and then I know you hear this, you know, throughout the community, but he really has, he's helped me out tremendously going through this. And then also, the new VAC has been a, a great asset. I, I can't speak highly enough of, you know, Kim and that whole committee and what they've been doing throughout the year to help me out. And just stuff that in the past might have had, have been, you know, kind of been on low priority. And they have just stepped up too and just, um, they're tremendous. I just see great things going forward with them and stuff that we have on, coming up through the VAC and events that, uh, we're going to be, uh, be doing. So I just wanted to get that right out of the way with just making sure that, uh, we, we acknowledge them. As far as, yeah, as far as the office and handling our clients, obviously with our programs, our clients are in the high-risk category. Most of them either have been in the hospital, um, numerous, um, you know, stays, um, have been staying in their house. So as far as getting, um, you know, making sure that their welfare and their health is there and that they're getting their needs as far as food, um, you know. and that they're getting their needs as far as food, you know, obviously prescriptions is big too and just keeping them at ease that, you know, we're here if there's anything they need to call us. We've been on staff since the start of it. The office has been maintained and, and so, so far, everything has been great. Unfortunately, we do have two of our clients that are in hospice and we're trying to do everything we can to, you know, keep them comfortable and see to their, their needs, their family needs right now through this and staying safe at the same time and keeping the family safe. So I see this, you know, going forward, obviously with all the departments and everyone has, you know, said this, that we don't know what the future's gonna be. We do have the vaccine coming in. I just recently got the update for all the veterans. I posted on my website for the vaccine. The TAGA group, the first group that they already completed in December was all the VA, Boston Community Living Center and Spinal Cord Injury Units. So they've all been vaccinated. Currently going on right now, they're doing the high-risk veterans who have, say, dialysis, chemotherapy, transplants or living in a, you know, homeless situation. So they're, they're currently doing them and then it breaks down to in February, they'll start with age 85 plus, followed in March by 75 plus, veterans 65 plus, veterans 50 plus in May and then the 50 and under will be in June. So hopefully that will speed up. We're getting updates, I'll get one Thursday again to see how that's going, but that's, that's all posted on my website. People have questions, obviously, please call in and talk to me. But yeah, so as far as, you know, going forward with the budget, we're just making sure that moving into the new facilities, that we're gonna be all set. So over last year to this year, actually, the, again, we've kind of maintained, I think it was only about $1,800 was the increase. And that was just due to, I think, just some longevity salary and that's, that's about it. It's gonna be, you know, obviously, once we get in there, we'll understand what, what our budget will, you know, have to take on, but right now, it looks like everything in our budget should handle our move, which is coming up in February. So and we're really looking forward to that. And then, yeah, so I would just say that the other thing too is I have set up and keep it in contact with the state on getting our telehealth set up and with the new conference room up there, we'll have that telehealth in there. And this will relieve, hopefully, you know, all these, so medical appointments that they can do telehealth-wise, we can get them in there. It'll be a private environment for them. The federal appeals process, again, they won't have to do any traveling, they can go in there. State hearings, same thing. So we're just hoping to relieve with this, you know, no traveling, privacy and, and so they won't be going into Boston or, you know, they can just stay here in Situate and take care of these, these situations. So that, that looks like, again, I had spoken with them, so we're on the list, we're definitely gonna get that equipment. So I think that's gonna be a huge goal for our veterans.
Terrific. Great. Thank you, Dawn. So the budget, last year, the budget was roughly $213,000. This year's recommended is $215,000. Really, the only thing that changed was increase in office supplies was sort of the biggest bump, which I thought was interesting. Are you buying more pencils for the new space?
Yeah. No, so with the office supplies, it was, now that we're moving out of this building, it would be, you know, we're gonna have the copier, a copier in our office and just, you know, the supplies for that because it won't be coming out of the budget here at the town hall, I'm gonna have to come up with that. So we just started out, we're gonna see how that works and then obviously adjust.
Yep.
So those are those growing pains of moving in, we just don't know. So we're just trying to get ahead of that one. We know we're gonna have a copier, so we figure that's where that expense would come from.
Okay, that makes sense. Are there any questions for Dawn about the veteran services or their budget? Mr. Vannadi?
Hey, Dawn, just one quick question for you. Were there any projects or items that the committee wanted to proceed with that may need some funding?
So it's, every, I gotta tell you again, the committee, that committee is unbelievable. So Kim and Drew and them, they, when they need funding, they, they're unbelievable. They go out and they get it. So like, just like I said, again, Reach Across America is just the most recent one. You know, normally the Legion would go out and, you know, they do their can drives and they, they get the money for those. But now with the new VAC there and Kim and, and all of them, they came right up, had money right away. And that was, you know, that's just one thing that they've done. And there's a lot of projects coming in play over the next year that they've already looked at, you know, where are we gonna get the funding fund? So they're already on top of it. So again, they're really tremendous when it comes to that.
Okay, so there's nothing specific that they're trying to get done that they're looking for funding on, that they can't fund themselves?
We, so there's a couple of things, you know, that we're talking and discussing. One would be a van for transportation and how that would work. And again, it's in the, it's in the stages of just seeing if it's, it's something that we really want to bring on, if we can't, you know, find another solution for that. The other projects that are coming up are fully funded right now.
Oh, good.
So, and they'll be, they'll be bringing those forward. So no, right now, I don't see anything where we need anything right now.
Super. Thanks, Dawn.
Yeah, you, I'm glad you mentioned the Veterans Advisory Committee because they have, they've just been extraordinary because they, you know, really didn't exist for a number of years and they've just hit the ground running. So I'm glad you have that additional support because certainly a good time for it.
It is. Like I said, the stuff that, you know, that needed to be done and with the work and the workload in here right now, especially with the COVID, it would have been, you know, unfortunately, I could see some of that stuff would have been probably on the back burner and it's not, it's, you know, not only how they put it on the front, they've completed most of them and they're already working on next year. So it's been awesome.
Great. All right. Any other questions for Dawn about veteran services from the board? Any from the public? I'm seeing none. Dawn, thank you so much. Look forward to being able to, you know, honor our veterans next year in person if we can.
I agree.
Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, then, we are to beautification, which is tab 650 in our books. We have, I saw Siska, Siski, I was Sitski, did I say that right? Humphrey's here and let him leave by now.
Hi.
Are you guys, so you guys are both co-chairs this year, is that correct?
I'm the treasurer. No, Sitski is the chair, I guess.
Great. Okay, so we, we do have your detailed outline. I was, it was a great overview, thank you. You know, I don't know, I'm sure you all had something to do with putting it together, but it really did outline, you know, all of the important work that you guys do and all of the volunteers. And the two things I just wanted to highlight for folks before we turn it over to you guys and, and look at the numbers is, I thought it was really, really cool that, that the beautification commission is, is part of the curriculum of Hadley, I mean, because of your initiatives, it's part of the curriculum at Hadley School. It's, I mean, to be, not to be punny, but to cross-fertilize like that is really, you know, what I like to see, all of our groups working together to, you know, to further, further education and, and beauty. So I thought that was cool. And the other thing is, I know you're gonna say this, is if anyone's interested, please contact the beautification commission to volunteer. So I will turn it over to you. I don't know who's presenting, Leslie or Sitski?
I think we both are Sitski.
Presenting.
Sitski, if you want to go first.
You can.
Fine. Oh, you want me to go first? Okay.
Yep.
Um, as far, I guess I'd just give the outline of, like, our major budget components are made up of 47% are contract labor, which is pretty much Bill Morris landscaping, that he maintains the 12 railroad islands and the seven large islands around town. This year, we are going to have to bid again and we were fortunate, he came in under $10,000 and we've had him doing that for three years. I, I'm, I would be surprised if we would get someone that, you know, that reasonable again, but maybe we will and maybe he will still bid it, bid out at that. I'm sure he'll, you know, be part of the bidding process. The other 10% is shipshape day and miscellaneous things, which obviously, we didn't do shipshape day last year. And 34% are plant materials, projects that we've done. Sometimes that 34 changes and the 10% changes. But like last year, our merchant program, our adopt-a-lot program suffered, obviously, because of the COVID. We're hoping we'll get back to what it was, you know, in a year ago. We were off by about $2,500 total that was spent on those two programs. I see at least some of that coming, being, you know, increased. The other thing is, we didn't do any plantings on the railroad islands, which we usually do every year. So I see that being another two, maybe two, 2,000, 2,500 to fill in what we've lost. It could be less than that, but I'm not sure. And usually for that material, I go down to Sylvan Nursery, so I'm able to get it wholesale. So the prices can change. But we're hoping that we do some form of shipshape day this year. We'll have, obviously, we have to wait and see. And then the other big project we had was the town hall project, which started a year ago and we finished the second phase this year. And that total for both phases was around $8,200. We would like to, in February, when we meet again, we're going to be going over other project, we'd like to come up with another project and we have a lot of ideas, you know, for this year and still, I think, probably maintain, you know, you know, working on the town hall project. So we do have a lot of, lot of things going, you know, it's, we're hoping that, you know, we can get back to a little bit more of what we were like in 2019, but obviously, it's hard to tell. And I don't know, Sitski, if you want to talk?
Yeah, I would just like to add to what you're saying that we were very much impacted by all of the restrictions because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we are particularly grateful to Ruth Thompson of the Mariner to help us advertise the programs that we have because we were not able to visit schools, for example, we were not able to meet with merchants face-to-face. We had a number of issues with our Zoom meetings and are very grateful to Seth for helping us out with all of those issues. With the collaboration that the Hadley School has and using marigold seed seeds, that is really a thank you to the garden club of Situate who started this idea and used the town flower for that. We're also very grateful to Mary Tenaro for all of the COVID-19 protocols that she put into place for our adopt-a-lot people. Kathy McCormick, who has been also very instrumental in helping with, and Leslie, who is right here, with the, the project that we have. And so the commission is very excited about starting a new project. They have been usually coming, lasting for two years because the expense is quite big, but we are thinking of four different sites right now that may be a possibility for us to work on and that really needs some work. So.
And remind me, how many volunteers roughly are in, on your books? I know it's a big number.
We have right now 24, we had this year 24 adopt-a-lot volunteers and we were able to get a donation to advertise the fact that they're volunteers and not people that work for a gardening company by buying t-shirts, designing t-shirts. And we hope that that again will help people to see that it's a volunteer organization and to join in and sign up for that and to know that it's a organization that is part of Situate. And another wish that we would have is after having worked on the town hall grounds, the town hall is really the entrance for most citizens to what their town stands for and the beautification commission is very interested in the town hall being the most beautiful town hall that we can make it. And if we'd have the money, we'd paint the windows and all of that too, because, you know, it looks a little shabby out there. So we do.
My sentiment exactly, Sitski.
Well, you know, we want to take pride in, in our town and I think the town hall is the, is the center of that pride for all of us. So we want it to be great as well as the health department that's right next to that area that we're kind of considering right now to spruce up a little bit, but we can't paint, unfortunately. We would, if we could.
Duly noted and appreciated, your observations. And I have to say, one of the reasons it looks so great is the hard work. Every time I come out there, there's this, you know, band of happy, well, sometimes just Leslie, but there's always somebody out there just tweaking and making it look good outside. So I can't thank you enough. I know Jim appreciates it. He gets to look out the window.
Yeah, and it's fun driving by and seeing, you know, seeing it looking good.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, great. Okay, if somebody wants to volunteer, what's the best way for them to reach you guys?
I think through, through our website, beautification@situate.com would be a good one.
Great.
And I do check that email very regularly and thanks to Lorraine, I even know how to access it. And nobody's ever leaving any messages that they want to volunteer, except we did get two new volunteers for the, for our commission, so we have two new board members.
Yep.
And they did contact us through that venue.
Good.
Through that email.
All right, well, Ruth is on, on the, on the call, so I'm sure you'll be hearing from her too soon, Ruth Thompson at the Mariner. Does the board have any questions for beautification?
Well, she's.
Oh, it's frozen. Mara, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, they're probably, this group are the unsung heroes of our town, you know, residents just so appreciate all the hard work that you all do. And I gotta tell you, the harbor just looked beautiful this summer. You know, whatever group is down there, they do a lovely job, you know, over by the fishing pier, that's such a beautiful entryway as you come down, beaver down.
Leslie Powell is at the fishing pier and Mary Ann Polanco is right over at the Harbor Master and they look beautiful.
It all looks beautiful. So just thank you so much and, and you do stretch your, your resources very well because I know they're limited and it's, you're very creative, so thank you. All right, let's hope we can do shipshape this year.
Yes.
Are there, yeah, does the board, Mr. Goodrich? Yeah, does the board have, Mr. Goodrich?
So yeah, look out for an email. I wanted, we should get some more stuff out on social media for them to get some. We can do a video or something to promote it.
Yeah, we would, I love the, the beginning video that we get every Monday when our town administrator and, and our select people do their presentation. I wish they would have taken the video when the plantings were in, you know.
We'll try to get outside next time. All right, good. Well, you know, one of the benefits of doing this annual review is it gives us great ideas for going forward. So thank you, everyone. If there's no questions, I don't see any hands raised. And we, we're running a little behind, so I'm gonna, um, thank you guys for your presentation.
Thank you.
For all of your work.
Thank you.
And we will go to our last one. Not last, but certainly not least, Mr. Chesia in Historical Society is tab number six ninety-one. And it's our report of the, are you there? There you are. Hello, happy new year. The town owns seven historic buildings that are under the historical commission's stewardship. And with their very thin budget, which we will get to the numbers on that in a minute, they do a great job. So Bob, would you like to, to just give a quick overview of, of this year's budget, of this coming year's budget for us?
Sure. You know, Dave Ball retired. I'm acting president until we find a president. So I did sit down with Dave when we went over it. We tried to keep the budget as low as we could. There's a lot of things that have to be done, which I don't think we, with COVID, we could even attempt to do. We needed, you know, a lantern room at the lighthouse, so on and so forth, but basically, Cudworth, we need to, a lot of work to repair Rod Pest Control Alarm System. Lawson Tower, there's work to be done there. We have rental accounts at three of the buildings, which hopefully will pay for any maintenance that has to be done, as long as it's not major. The Mass Humane Building has been re-roofed. I think there'll be nothing done there. The Lawson Gates definitely needs some repair and painting. A lot of our expenses are pest control, electricity, gas, so on and so forth. I think that it's a small budget, but I think we can make it work. If not, we may have to put something off till next year.
Okay, so yeah, so the number, last year, the, the budget was, I'm reading sideways here.
Twenty-two hundred.
Yeah, twenty-two hundred, and this is level funded at the same amount. Just no increase. Did, I, I, I should know this, and I'm sorry, didn't have a chance to call you ahead of time. Is the Mordecai Lincoln going to be absorbed by, be under the supervision?
No.
It's not? Okay. I wasn't sure about that.
We went there and walked around, and I, the mill is not a mill anymore, and I mean, I don't think there's anything we can do with it. We do support the purchase of it, absolutely. And I mean, if there's anything we can do as far as presentations or something like that, we would love to do it, but I think that we own, actually own six of our own buildings that we maintain, so that's thirteen properties that we maintain.
Yeah.
Which is a lot, especially when you get called at, you know, midnight because the alarm went off so early.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you, guys. You guys have done a great job with COVID, everyone. It's kind of interesting to see all the comments, and they've all done a fantastic job.
Yeah.
I'm very proud of my town.
No, thank you for that. And I, I, I'm embarrassed that I didn't lead off this conversation with acknowledging and thanking Dave Ball. We did that when he did retire at a meeting, but it's weird, we all can't be together, but his service for twenty years, was it?
Close to thirty.
They're close to thirty years as.
He had over twenty Eagle Scout projects for the Historical Society in the town. I mean.
Well, we, we, we've, we've extended our thanks and congratulations and, and sorry, sorry to see him go, but I just want to reiterate that. Does the board have any questions or comments to, to Mr. Jesse about the Historical Commission and the budget proposed? Mara, are you leaning forward?
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm just curious, and I don't know if this is more of a question for Nancy. Or if she's even still.
Yes.
Oh, she is. Hi, Nancy. There you are. You'll find you on the Brady Bunch display there. You know, Bob expressed some frustration that they weren't able to get some of the work done because of COVID. Were we able to, you know, encumber any of the funds from two thousand and twenty-one to hold that? So, you know, with things open up, that we'll be able to catch up on some of these properties because they're so important?
We weren't able to carry any monies over for fiscal twenty because we weren't able to do the work. So the answer to that is no.
No, yeah.
Sorry.
If your question is, will we be able to carry funds from two thousand and twenty-one into two thousand and twenty-two? That's possible. If you have the contract signed, you can encumber the funds. So they can still do work in the spring, and it can carry over into the summer, if that makes sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. So Bob, are you aware of that sort of process? I just want to make sure we help them however we can, so.
Yeah, we usually come pretty close to spending our budget, to say the least.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure you're able to do the work though.
Did you get Lawson Tower for Christmas all lit up?
It looks beautiful. I'm distracted every morning when I go down early with the big blue lights at the top.
I put those up, and I figured I'd just leave them on because I think they kind of look pretty cool.
They do look nice. They look great. I do want to put on our, our schedule, Madam Chair, in the future, you know, what is the maintenance plan for Mordecai Lincoln, since we're hearing that it's not coming under the Historical Society? So I think we need to talk about that.
Yeah, I'm writing it down furiously right now. Great.
And thank you, Bob, for everything.
Thank you.
Great, well, Happy New Year, and thank you for staying with us. And we will, we'll look forward to being able to open the buildings up this year, huh?
Yeah, that would be nice.
That would be nice. Okay, great. Thanks so much, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes what we, the budgets that we are scheduled to review this evening. I just, a lot of people have joined in the, in the last hour. I don't know why they didn't want to spend all this time with us, but I just want to alert everyone, we have one more item on scheduled items to discuss. The eight forty memorial bench has been withdrawn by the applicant, but we are going to take a quick, a little break at, after our next item to stretch our legs and get more water before we jump into the old business, which is the wind turbine. So just to let people who've done recently know that that's going to happen. So the last thing on our scheduled items is a discussion vote of one forty-three Border Street Notice of Intent to Sell. Jim, you want to just remind the board where we are on this?
Sure. The board recalls, Border Street is a large piece of property. This is on the riverside of Border Street. That property was subdivided into several different lots. Lot fourteen was a very small sliver that I forget how many months ago, the board declined our option to buy because that land was conveyed to the neighbor to make the neighbor's house conforming. So that's already been conveyed. Lot fifteen was conveyed to an owner who is keeping it under sixty-one A, so we do not have the right of first refusal. This is lot sixteen, about six acres. It includes the house that is on the property. That is the lot we're talking about. And then lot seventeen is the remainder of the property, which has been in discussion, but is not in discussion for the board tonight. So this is the six plus acres, more or less, of land on the plan. You have a copy of the plan in your packet. Just trying to find it. You can see that it's the possibl, the house. I don't believe the town has an interest in purchasing the house. And I know the planning board has already voted to recommend that the town not exercise our option to purchase. So people who are watching at home, sixty-one A is a designation of land that allows a person to keep it in, I believe, Forest Street is sixty-one A. They pay a lesser tax on that. However, if they wish to convey that property and remove the designation, the town has a right of first refusal to purchase that property. So this property is being conveyed. It's being taken out of sixty-one A. Therefore, the town has the right to exercise our option to attempt to purchase it. We can either deny that option, or we have, don't act a hundred and eighty days, and our options declined automatically. So I know we've discussed that there's really no use for the town to have this particular lot with the house the way it's cut.
Great, thank you, Jim. I will note that the current owner's attorney has joined us, whom we met before, and now we get to see. Kathleen O'Donnell is on one of our little boxes. Yeah, we have, we've discussed this a couple of times. The, you know, the use really isn't changing because the house already exists. Does the board have anything further that they feel we need to discuss on this matter? I think we've pretty much covered it. I don't see any burning desire. I will ask if anyone has called in or who's are participating, if they would like to comment on this before we move to a vote. You can raise your hand. You have any questions for us? I see no hands raised. If there's no discussion from the board, is anyone prepared to make a motion on this matter? Everyone's thinking about it.
Got to find it.
I can make it if you'd like.
Sure, it's on page ten of our backup package.
I move that the Situate Board of Selectmen vote not to exercise the town's option to purchase one forty-three Border Street, Situate, Mass, on the census parcel number zero zero six dash zero zero two dash zero zero nine, lot sixteen, more fully described in a notice of intent to sell one forty-three Border Street dated November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, and to send written notice of the town's waiver of rights under General Law Chapter sixty-one A, paragraph fourteen, to the trust by certified mail.
Moved by Ms. Curran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Is there any further discussion about this matter? Seeing none, this motion requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignali?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Great, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Attorney O'Donnell, for joining us. Nice to see you. Happy New Year. I'm sure we'll be talking again soon. That concludes our scheduled items, and as I noted, we will be taking a brief break. I had, I said ten up at the beginning. Is five okay with the board? Can you go get your glasses of water in five minutes? Okay, so we will, we will be right at, at the stroke of nine, we will reconvene to begin the discussion on the wind turbine. And thank you for your patience. We've been sitting here since six-thirty and needed a stretch.
I was enjoying the music, though. That was nice.
I know. Seth, thank you for that musical interlude.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome.
All right. Now we got, we've got, waiting for Mr. Vignali. I guess that's it, right? Thank you, everyone, for letting us go. Free stock.
Madam Chair, you'll love my new favorite Christmas gift. Oh, let me go to the fridge.
In your son's room?
Oh, need my seltzer.
I love it. Yeah, we're getting our little COVID pods all tweaked out. This is Vignali. Thank you for joining us. All right, are we, are we all here? We all back? Seth's recording. Lorraine, you back?
Yes.
All right, great. Okay, so we will continue unless anybody objects. There's Nancy. Okay, so we are now into old business, which is to review, discuss, and vote on the wind turbine. I will remind everyone, last time we met was to review the Epsilon Report that was commissioned, I don't know what the right word is, was, was contracted for to determine if the conditions of the operation of the turbine were in compliance with our bylaws, which coincidentally are also the same bylaws, the same, the bylaws referred to Mass General Law Noise Ordinance. So we commissioned that. It was conducted, it was presented, and the board felt that it was important to, given, given some of our questions and given some concerns residents, that we would like to make sure that the protocol used on that analysis was consistent with DEP regulations and their, how they would view an assessment of the noise compliance. And so we postponed furthering this discussion until we had that information, and I am very sorry to report that today, Jim, DEP was supposed to have that to us by the end of the year. And Jim, why don't you update the board on what you're, you were updated to today?
Yeah, I called Seth Pickering today because he's the one who's coordinating on this. He said, really, due to a combination of COVID delays and the holidays, the report is just about finished. They're in the process of reviewing the report, and they will have the report out to us with their comments within ten to, ten days to two weeks.
So unfortunately, we don't have that information. And, you know, that was, that was obviously important to a lot of people that are on this call and obviously to the board. And I can see that their faces not surprised by that, but it, it is what it is. So the board has, we have a lot to talk about, obviously, that isn't hinging on whether or not we think the protocol was correct or not. For the purposes of our discussion, I would suggest to the board, and, and I would like to see if everyone agrees, I would suggest that we start, we work with the assumption that the protocol followed was appropriate and accurate. We hired professionals to do it. We had input from people and, and and have a discussion based on that. Should we get a report in two weeks that is contrary to that, then obviously, we will need to revisit that. But I would hesitate, I would really hate to postpone our discussion on some of the other, you know, some of the surrounding issues because we didn't hear from DEP again. Well, how does the board feel about continuing with some of the other issues around this with that, with that assumption? I've got one nodding. Yeah, okay. Any comments on, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate, it's out of our control, and it's, it's maddening, but I don't want to, you know, the alternative is to say, all right, we'll wait until we hear from them, and I don't think that's appropriate. Okay. All right, so if we assume that, then I would propose that the board, the things that we need to consider is if we have the study, which is in some pile over here. We have a study that shows that almost all but one of the data points was in compliance with the bylaws, and that the one data point that was not in compliance, the report indicates that there are mitigating circumstances. Do we feel that with the, obviously with the assumption that we, the protocol turns out to be acceptable to DEP, do we feel that the report provides us with anything that would indicate noncompliance and would trigger a discussion with the operator? Does anyone want to opine on that subject?
No, it, it does not appear that they're out of compliance at this point in time unless the DEP comes back to us and tells us that there's some flaw in the report, is my opinion.
Mr. Goodrich?
I mean, I, I'll just say, I was not part of the, you know, original discussion with getting this company on board and everything else. I'll just say, I just, even seeing the report, I just have concerns with it in general. I can't, I, I can't find, and I remember asking, asking them, when have they ever said no to any of their studies? And I can't find any evidence. They always say yes. And any FOIA's that I've seen from, from other, from past, you know, experiences of what's happened, it just, I, I, I'm just generally concerned. But I'll also say, to me, this whole question, it doesn't matter because I still feel at the turbine, we have enough evidence that it's too close because people have been complaining for eight years. that it's too close because people have been complaining for eight years. That at some point, more testing, this testing, it's like we're spinning our wheels here. We know there's a problem because I trust the people in our town who are telling us that there's a problem. And I don't think the DEP regs are, I also believe that the DEP regs are written to make sure these things are always approved. I look at every other city and town across America and they have setbacks with feet, 2,000 feet, 3,000 feet. And we have this convoluted, stupid system of audio decibel levels on this height and that, and it's ridiculous. So, yeah. I'm sorry that I sound upset about it, but I know that's the world that we live in, but I, I understand people being upset about it and at some point, you know, we just, we have to start making some decisions. So that's my opining on it and I'm sorry if.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. That's exactly the, the sort of input that we need at this point. You brought up.
Oh, wait, wait, that's not, let's, let's tap the brakes a little bit here. You know, we, we hired somebody. To have problems with regulations is one thing, but to have problems with an independent party that we hired to come in and do it. If, if we, if we don't like the testing results, we can't all of a sudden say that, or, or lead people to believe that the testing wasn't done accurately. It is a, as objective of a test as they can do during the times that they did it. So I just don't want to mislead people to thinking that this is some hack company that was hired to give us the answer that we wanted because that wasn't the case at all. The fact that, that the regulations may not turn out to be, to show many false people that are, are breaking the guidelines is not, is not this company's problem, is not this company's fault. So, you know, maybe the regulations aren't as, as good as we would like them to be, or especially these neighbors that are complaining would like it to be. But when we put the, the windmill up, that's what they were and that's what they went by. So, you know, we vetted the, the organizations that, that wanted to do this pretty well. And I don't think we want to give the impression that they didn't do their job accurately or with integrity.
Great. I, that's a very good point and that, what I was going to say, Tony, was not, you know, I appreciate Mr. Goodrich airing his concerns.
Oh.
But what I, what the, the concerns about whether there are concerns or not, I mean, we can talk about that all day long, about the, the study. Is it material to the fact that we, we know? So let's say it's 100% in compliance. What are we going to do? Say, okay, sorry, we're done, we can't do anything. I don't think this board has indicated that that is what they want to do. So we have to say, okay, we don't have that tool, what tools do we have? The second is if we had, if it, if, if it came back and nothing was in compliance, we would go to the operator and we would say nothing's in compliance and they would get to, they would have an opportunity to fix it. And then we'd just be having this conversation. So, I don't at all dismiss, I agree with you 100% that we hired what we thought were qualified, professional, well-reputable, reputable people to do the study for us. They have to do it under the guidelines for the town, or of the state. We don't have any control about those guidelines. It's above our pay grade. So, you know, is the, is the study done in good faith? Is it done, is it done in compliance and is it showing us that there's nothing wrong? Answer is yes. Does that mean we have to walk away? I would say the answer is no, and I would propose that we say, you know, that we could, as Andrew said, we could go out and find, and, and people on this call have said, we can go out and find a million people to do studies. But what is what you're trying to accomplish? What we're trying to accomplish is to find relief for the people that this is bothering. Is that, is that a fair statement? Okay. So, before we start talking about that stuff, do Maura or Karen want to jump in at the, on, on, on our semantic discussion first?
Well, I, yeah, I'll go Karen on it because you're on mute still, if you don't mind. I mean, I, part of me feels like I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place because I completely sympathize with all of the complaints that we've received from this, this group here present tonight. You know, from what I can tell, it's pretty much, they're all, they're all here this evening. And, you know, I, I do think their pain is real, but then we also have to balance that against all of the obligations that we have fiscally and contractually through this contract that was done, you know, legally, within the regulations. So, it, it is a tough situation that we as a board are in. I agree that I think there are some steps that we can take. Hopefully, we can discuss tonight some of the additional information that we have back with, you know, cost impact and and flicker and things like that. I, I want to talk about things like that, but I I think we are almost in a position where we have to go to that middle ground and identify what kind of relief, if any, can we provide to these residents. And then if the DEP comes back, then, then there we go, there's our ammunition, right? But where we sit today, we don't have a lot of additional ammunition to turn off the turbine at the risk of, you know, $6 million of liability to an effort that was supported by the majority of residents in this town. So, you know, that's where I'll, I'll just stop there. And I look forward to a little bit more conversation about, you know, what are those options that we can look at to provide some sort of relief and, and different things that I think Tony, you know, has had some, you both, both of you have had some good meetings with Cituate Wind to further identify some of the curtailment plans and some of, you know, comparing that to the complaints that a lot of these residents have brought forward. So, I think it'll, some of that, I look forward to some of that discussion this evening because I, I think there are some opportunities for us to ask for some adjustments, if you will, moving up, financial, but yeah, some programming adjustments.
Yeah, we'll jump, we'll jump into some of the details of that because some of the nuances are really going to be important to our conversation, but I wanted to give Ms. Conley a little opportunity to have, I guess it's opening remarks.
Well, I, I agree with Maura, I agree with everyone. I understand the financial implications. And I think we can fight forever over studies and which study is which study and who's more, you know, who's, who is the bigger expert and we just keep spinning our wheels on this thing. I think there are some solutions that we could propose and that I would hope that the, the people who are affected by this would consider it a good faith effort on our part to address their issues. And I will just say, I don't think it's an all or nothing situation. And if anyone here is all, it's all or nothing, then, you know, I don't know how we're going to solve it. So I, I hope that people can keep an open mind about things that we might propose to do to help solve the problem for you.
Okay, well, I think maybe, I think that's a great segue into saying that, you know, we, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time trying to answer questions people have sent to us. Questions that the board raised last, at our last meeting, that we wanted some clarification with. We've met with town council, we've met with Cituate Wind to try to make sure that we are in the, you know, our, our understanding is as strong as possible. And having said that, I mean, it's, I think it's pretty clear, as you, Karen, as you point out, the option of turning it off forever is really not viable for a host of reasons, which I think, I honestly think everybody on this, this call probably is well aware of where we are on that. And it has, is, it has to do with contracts and it has to do with noise regulations at the state level and then obligations to the town. So would we, and I, and I make that statement and I don't, I put it out there to make sure that there's no one on the board that thinks otherwise on that, just as a place to start our conversation. If we, if, if we're not going to consider that. Okay, no one's joining in. So that means, what, what is appropriate? We, the board, I, I forgot to look it up. I think it was almost, I mean, Dave would know, Dave nod, was it three years ago the board voted on a curtailment plan? It was a while ago. To turn it off when we got the most complaint, in the direction where the complaints were coming from, at night, turn it off. We've now had many years of debate, data on that and from people, complaints and from the the financial impact to the town on that. And I think it's, in my opinion, and I'd like to know what the board thinks, in my opinion, I think it's demonstrated that the conditions of that curtailment were not adequate to either address the concerns, you know, that were, you know, that were approved three years ago. Because, you know, it, it really isn't getting shut off that much and we know we're getting complaints. So, I would, I would, I would put out first off that we should discuss whether or not we need to modify those, if the board feels we should modify those curtailments. And then, so what does that look like? And, and, and then what are the implications of that? Because depending on what you decide, you know, you decide is the right answer, there's a different decision tree. And I will, at the outset, remind the board that there's nothing in the Cituate Wind contract that requires them to to do a curtailment. They, at the initial request, they, they agreed to do it. And, but there's nothing that compels them in their contract. So they have, they have been operating with us to try to address some of these issues. So, that's a lot of words to say. Do you guys want to talk about revising the curtailment plan? Mr. Vignali?
Yeah, I just add one thing to that, Karen, is in the, in the conversations that we've had with them over the last several months, there's no other option. We've, we've gone to them and said, you know, can you make it quieter some other way? Can you up, you know, can you update things? Can you oil it better? Can you do something different that would do it? And there's no other solution. You know, is there any technology that could be done? And they mentioned something about a different type of fan on it. But that, that, but that was not, it wasn't viable for, for the reasons that they gave. So, curtailment is, is the only kind of option that we have.
Yeah, they did say they were gonna, they looked at another type of engine or motor. I'm, I'm sure I'm totally butchering what the components are. Thing that makes it go, and they said that it actually makes it louder, the new one. So, they didn't recommend changing that. So, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, so I, I would just say, yes, I think, you know, I, I looked at this stuff several months ago. I took a number of dates of complaints in the end of August and through the beginning or mid-September and tried to identify where, what was going on. And it became very clear that the the swath of direction that we selected in the beginning was not, was not the area that the wind was coming in and that was causing the complaints. So, and I think I went over this at one meeting in terms of where the wind is coming from that, that got a number of complaints last, this fall and then in summer. So I think, I think we should review that.
Okay, the board did pose, I think it was the last meeting, questions about, you know, what's the financial impact? I, I, I think I'm correct in saying that when the board voted you know, last time to do a curtailment, at that time, it was estimated that the cost to the town was, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, it was around, I think it was around $50,000, actually, before Jim's time.
Yes, before my time, but I believe that's correct.
Okay, so the prior board said, let's curtail it and we are, and they accepted that, you know, $50,000 was, was an acceptable amount to try to address these problems. So I want to just remind the, the board of that. The questions that, and I don't, I apologize, I don't remember which of you asked which of these, but we asked for a calculation of, under different scenarios, if we, you know, we asked the question, what if we shut the damn thing off all the time? What would that cost? And we asked, what if we shut it down every night, all year round? And what if we shut it down every night in the summer? And, you know, we tried to slice and dice it. And so that information is, has, has been provided to the board. But I just wanted to say, I just wanted to remind everybody that we started with an acceptable amount and it was within, it was, it was, we thought it was doable. Cituate Wind thought it was doable at a $50,000 mark. Tony, could you just walk the board through just sort of the, the contractual concerns? If, you know, it's sort of like, it's almost like a, a scale. You know, you turn it off this much, it costs this much, and then that has implications for the operation. You know, you know what question I'm asking?
In, in terms of monetarily?
Well, yeah, like they have to be able to have, the contract requires them to provide us with a certain amount of kilowatts. So if we say to them, you know, we really need to shut it down all night, every night.
Yeah, I mean, there is, like Karen said initially, is that they don't have to shut it off. They, they've been very accommodating, maybe too, too strong of a word, but they've been very, you know, working as a partner with us to try and design, resolve our issues. But they mentioned to us that they do have, they do have responsibilities in terms of the amount of electricity that, that they produce here because they have then sold off the credits to other people. So, they can't, there is going to be some sort of a limit in terms of if we just say shut it off 75% of the time, then they're not gonna, they're not going to go along with that because they have commitments to make in terms of the amount of energy that needs to be reduced from that turbine. Every time we shut it off, we pay for it. You know, we pay for not only the electricity and the money that, that Cituate Wind would make on it, but also the cost of the, the power that we save, you know, the, the cost difference on the power that we actually use. So, so they're not, when we shut it off right now, they're not losing anything because we essentially pay them whatever the total cost would be for us, for, if it were running. And because it's being shut off so infrequently, it really is really nominal in terms of what the costs have been. It'd been in some cases under $1,000 for a year, which is not what we thought it would be as Karen mentioned earlier, when we first set up these parameters. So, so I don't, I don't know. You know, the, the only other component of it is when you shut it off at, at, at different levels, you know, it can create more energy. So it's kind of exponential as the windier it gets. When you shut it off, it, it was producing more energy. So it costs you more during those times. So if you shut it off at low, increases less, less wind. So it costs you less. If you shut it off at higher wind levels, then it costs you more because it would produce more energy. Is that where you're, where you're going?
So we, we have estimates, you know, as, as good as they can be based on the history of the, of the turbine operation of, of what, you know, however you slice it, what generally it would cost. Maura, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted, no, I wouldn't want to add, but I wanted to ask either Tony or Jim this question. On the, on the, the information that we have with regards to the increased cost of curtailment and the cut in speed, you know, on, on the left-hand side, that goes from 4.5, I don't know, is it meters per second? I don't, I don't know what M slash S stands for. So, I'm not an engineer. Down to 12. Are those incremental costs? You know, I just want to understand how to read this chart a little bit more coherently. So is that that speed? If I look across, is that the, the cost to us for that type of curtailment? Do you guys have that open?
Are you looking at, at this big, massive one?
I'm looking at the, the one that's yellow, blue.
My printer ink died, sorry.
It's the analysis of cost of increased curtailment.
Yeah.
That one.
I'm calling out Maura, but I believe you're correct. As you go across, it shows the incremental cost for that curtailment.
Yeah, so for, when it, when it, when the wind speed is 7.0 and, you know, whatever meters per second, whatever that is. Whoever wants to correct me, do it now.
Lost NMC, what's NMC? Net metered something. Yeah, but yeah.
Okay, so, all right, that's what I wanted to understand. So just looking over horizontally, that's the cost to us, correct? Got it.
Yeah, the, the total line. Because we have to pay them and then we lose credits.
Right.
Right.
Right, and 4.5? Right, and 4.5 meters per second is 10 miles an hour.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that helps considerably.
Okay, so just for the benefit of the folks who don't have this in front of me, we, you know, we really like, sliced and diced it to say, okay, at what wind speed does, you know, what does that translate into cost and all of that? Because it's important for the board to be able to, I mean, we can all say, you know, whenever it blows in that direction, it's causing problems, so we should turn it off. But to be responsible, we need to know what that translates into cost. And we need to be able to, if necessary, you know, have a conversation, maybe renegotiate the contract, whatever. But so that's why we have all of this detail, which you're more than welcome to look at. All right, so, so I'll, uh, does anybody else want to add anything? Mr. Goodrich, yes?
But I, I guess I'm just, I'm just nervous of doing curtailment based on wind speed versus direction. Cause this is a net, to me, this is a never-ending. Oh, we go south to southwest over 4.2 knots, south directional, whatever, and then we're lost again. I humbly should think that it's, I know it's going to cost more, but people can't sleep. We know times, we do this for other businesses, that you can't be super loud between 1:00 AM and 5:00 AM. Because people get like woken up, right? This is like any other business, if we treat it in that aspect where this is easy and clear that we do a time base. It might be, I think, easier for the residents and easier for us. And also that we're predict, trying to predict the future here on when, it may never go over, you know, who knows what the wind may be. Like, it may never go over that, we don't have a big storm or, you know, who knows? I know there's historical data that's there, but still, it's very difficult. For how things change, so I, I'm, you know, willing to have the discussion to go down this road. I just, I think it might be easier, um, for everyone involved that we look at a time-based versus a directional-based curtailment.
Yeah, I mean, in the way I read that chart that we have in our hands, the number, the total number is all-inclusive of all wind directions. Am I reading that correctly, Tony and Jim?
The wind direction's at the top, Mara.
I, I understand that.
Oh, yeah, the totals are all correct.
This is, this would be.
This is only the.
Half the wind direction.
Last half, right.
Westerly, this does not include when the wind's blowing from the easterly.
But the, but the westerly is where we are getting most of, all of our complaints, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. And, and Andrew, that's based on historical data of complaints of years of logging and, and whatnot. So I, I am comfortable looking at that.
So but, but Mara, just, if you said shut it off all the time, all directions, that number is at least doubled. But it's not linear because certain times of year, the wind blows more from certain directions, so. But.
Right.
This is basically the wind from half the compass rose, is what you're looking at.
So, so Tony, I think when you did your analysis, you said the original curtailment, when you looked at, if you looked at a, a clock, was only like, you had a great analogy, it was only like an hour on a clock, right?
Yeah, so it's kind of, if you looked at a clock, so this, this chart right here is everything from six to 12. This, this chart that we have here. Right now, we shut it off from about 6:30 till about eight, maybe, 7:30, eight, if the wind comes from that direction. And most of the complaints that we got, you know, they, it didn't complain when it came from that area because it shut off. But the complaints that were in addition to these, all were coming from a more westerly angle. So it was coming up to almost 10:30 or 11 o'clock. So, and, and again, this was during that, that time period of August and September. So, you know, it, it, it's, it's, the additional complaints again were from, if, if the thing went from 7:30, it went from 7:30 to 10:30.
Okay, and we're not talking time of night, people were talking, looking at a clock, just.
Yeah, exactly, I was gonna say that.
Right, there are two components, right? So Andrew's right, it is, it, it, it's not a, a simple graph. There's a time component and there's a directional component, and there's a speed component. You know, when the wind is howling, you're not going to hear the turbine because the wind is so loud. That was the assumption that was made when this whole thing was put, the first mitigation was put into place.
So, so Andrew's proposed that we, we take wind speed out of the calculation. And we look at it, in my, I'm just, so I understand, propose looking at, if we're going to talk about a curtailment, forget wind speed, talk about direction and time of day. Is that what you, did I paraphrase that correctly? Okay. All right, so that, that's interesting. Okay, so if that's the case, and if the board thinks that that's an appropriate way to, to look at this. Um, I think Tony, you just said, we know that 99.9% of the complaints over the last eight to nine years have been on the direction east of, I don't even know which way, oh, towards the water from the turbine. I think we've gotten like a couple coming from Tony's house. Tony's the other direction. I, I, I think that's correct. Is anybody, I mean, you've been here the longest, Tony, I think, would you?
Yeah, I mean, the, there's complaints from, you know, the people that are off on Gilson Road and, um, you know, in the cliff area. Actually, there's not many complaints from people over on Third Cliff. It seems to be almost in this direct path to where the Darties live. You know, in, in the, in the actual band that.
On Gilson and down below.
Right, in that band that, that the original thing was aimed directly at, but.
Didn't work, right.
But, but just because you're aimed at it, doesn't mean the wind doesn't spin and go there from other directions, I guess.
So, if that, I would then further amend our discussion to, to try to, to dance, you know, to dance on this pin is to say, do we need to even consider turning off at any time when it's going the other way? Would the board want to consider that? As opposed to doing, you know, whatever the timeframe is for the turbine? Am I, am I being, am I making sense?
Yes, so keep it on when it's going from 12 to 6.
Exactly. And then curtail.
Yeah, you.
No, the other way around, turn it off.
If that encompassed terms, uh, Tony.
Yeah, when it's, when it's blowing from the east, you're going to keep it on. When it's blowing from the west, you're going to turn it off.
Thank you.
To some degree, you know.
Right.
You know, it's easier, as Andrew said, if you do kind of a broad brush. But the more concise or more you can reel it in a little bit, the more money you're going to potentially save.
Well, I mean, and that's where we start butting up against what is accomplishable. And I, I mean, I've said this to many people that are on this call, is the goal here is to, to, to find ways to help folks that we can actually accomplish, um, and do it as quickly as we, I, I would hope as quickly as possible. If, if we say, if we know that if we turn it off, say, every night in the summer, no matter which way it's blowing, that that is estimated to cost, you know, $109,000 or something every year. I don't know without having a conversation with, with Situtwind, if that starts to butt up against what is, um, contractually absorbable for them. You know, we're assuming we're going to figure out the finances internally, obviously.
Actually, I think the number is, is much higher than that, Karen.
Oh, am I looking at the wrong one? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we, you know.
Yeah, so, yeah, actually, I'm, thank, thank you for pointing that out because that was updated and I've got an old.
Yeah, it's more around $232,000 a year.
Thank you, I did have the wrong number, right. So, so let's say it's, you know, $235,000 a year. If, if it's un, if, if we think it's largely unnecessary to do half of that time. I know, and I, obviously you don't know which way the wind's going to blow all the time, but let's, if we can, if we don't, if we don't need to cut it off for that half, because it really doesn't seem to be impacting people that way. Then we have a much higher probability of being successful in finding a way to turn it out, turn it off more, if that makes sense. No? Head shaking, Andrew?
Is it able to operate like that? So at 2:00 AM and now it's coming east, it can turn on real quick and then, oh, now it's going west, it shuts off? I just don't know, like literally how it works, I don't know if that's.
So that's what it does right now. And it, and that isn't the preferable way of them to do hard starts and hard stops. You know, we'll get to some other conversations later. If they know they're shutting it off at 10, then they can kind of ease into that. If they shut it off because the wind hits 4.5, then it's kind of a slamming on the brakes as opposed to taking your foot off the gas.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but I think Andrew's got a good question is how do they know which way the wind's going to blow that night? Like, what if the wind changes all of a sudden in the middle of the night?
Then it either goes off or on based on those parameters. So it's monitoring it, as soon as it's coming from whatever direction we tell them at whatever speed, it's either on or off.
Okay, but we're talking about keeping the speed out of it, just wind direction?
Well.
Well, we could talk about that too, I mean, yeah. Yeah, if we know that, you know, I think, I forgot somebody on the, somebody who's sent us information that, you know, the lower speeds, it doesn't seem to matter. But I'm not even going to go in there because I'm not an engineer. But I think we'd need to just talk about what the board's appetite is and what they think is the right next step. So, so we're, we're, we're saying that we definitely need to revise the curtailment. And now we just have to figure out what we think is the appropriate curtailment and what's achievable. Correct? I just want to make sure incrementally, I'm not taking leaps here.
Yes, I think we need to expand the breadth of the wind direction.
Okay.
And whether we want to talk about changing the speed. I think the hours we have are fine, you know, I think, whatever we have, uh, 11 to 6 or.
Uh, 10, I think it's 10 to 6, isn't it Jim? Right now?
Currently. It's currently 11 to 6.
11 to 6, okay.
You know, so that, that component, I think we should expand it to as wide as all westerly. Or a little bit narrow would be from like 7 to 11, if you look at a clock.
Okay.
And then we just have to decide at what wind speed on the higher end or the higher or lower end. Do you keep it on?
Okay, and then, yeah, so that, so at what wind speed is it not material?
Right.
That's what we have to determine. Okay.
So, I'm sorry, just for clarity, when, when you're saying 11 to 6, are you saying direction or, or time?
Time.
Direction, 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Yeah, yeah. So that, yeah. Okay.
That's current.
That's the current timeframe, um, I.
So, so the current one, this current timeframe is 11 to 6, if it hits that.
Little window.
That little window, it gets shut off.
Right.
The discussion now is between that same time period or we're stretching the time period and a larger window to include westerly and over.
Correct. So, um, I don't, I don't think the time, the 11 to, I think 11 to 6 is, has been, I mean, it was accepted three years ago, I don't, I don't, you know, unless we get in some input that people don't think that's a good idea. But, um, I think that's a good starting place. Um, okay. All right, Tony has, has put forth a direction, literally, um, for discussion. So we, if we do that, we generally think that, do you think this total on the, on the big sheet, the estimated impact is roughly $75,000 a year? If we went by, if we took everything that was on the analysis sheet, which is south, southwest to north, northwest.
Well, it would be that if it's, it's, if it's all wind speeds, right?
That's, no, that's all wind speeds, yes.
Yeah.
That would be like the maximum exposure, all wind speeds projected for a summer, like a full summer. This is just summer, summer shutdown.
Yeah.
Okay, I would argue that that is materially the same decision that was made before. If it was 50 was, I mean, this is an estimate, the other 50 was estimated, that it's, it's not a significant cost, um, difference from the deci, the original decision. It is, I mean, it's 25,000, I can hear Tony saying it already. But it's not triple, you know, what the original decision was.
But wasn't, um, so if this starts at 10 miles per hour, right? You know, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but weren't a lot of the complaints when the wind speeds were lower than 10 miles per hour? I mean, that's, that's really, you know, we, we can expand this, but is there some mechanical reason why we have to, you know, start at this 4.5 meters per second? Is that what it is again, sorry? Because that to me also is something we need to discuss. Because what I recall all of the residents saying is that it really was.
Mara, it's below that. If it's below 10 miles an hour, it's shut off. That's what this is. So the valid, the wind speed is below 4.5 meters per second as measured at the, that's when it shuts off. So it is lower wind speeds. If it's above 10 miles an hour, it stays on.
There's a lot of heads shaking, I don't think we got that right.
So, so the, the curtailment says, conditions for curtailment of the wind turbine operations are if the wind speed is below 4.5 meters per second, which is 10 miles an hour. So it includes any of that low, low stuff. If it's 11 miles an hour, it stays on. If it's nine miles an hour, it shuts off. If you go down this thing, if you go down here, like if you go down to nine now, then it's only going to shut off if it's over 20 miles an hour.
Right, got it.
So from zero to 20, it will shut off. So that's where the higher wind speeds were considered not a problem because of the wind was so loud that you couldn't hear the turbine over.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Where did you get that, that, is that from the, the order, Tony? I don't have that in front of me.
I don't know where the document came from.
There's a lot of paper.
It just has the five, five conditions that it shut off. June 1st, June 1st to October 15th, 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Wind direction is, um, within 22 and a half degrees of southwest. And wind speed is below 4.5 meters per second.
All right, and we know that didn't work.
Well, it, it did work, it shut off during those, so there's no complaints when, when it's under those conditions because it turns off.
Right, but I think Tony, to your point, you know, we've got to expand that.
Right, it just doesn't blow in that condition very often.
Correct. All right now. I don't, I personally do not feel competent enough to discuss the wind, um, speed directions. Um, I think we need to have some more, we need somebody, I mean, if you guys are comfortable with it, I'm gonna, I, I'll be backing off. I know Mr. Darty's smart enough to do it, he's waving his hand. But, um.
I believe we should increase the wind. I don't know what we should increase it to. That's where maybe we should talk to Situtwind. I mean, it's pretty nominal to go from four and a half to five. You know, we'd have to get some, you know, do you go over seven? I don't know. You know.
Right, but then.
So we should, we should talk to somebody that knows more about wind speed and the, the noise.
Right, well, we've gotten a lot of information from lots of folks that say that it, you got, you, you can't just look at the. from lots of folks that say that it, you got, you, you can't just look at the speed. You gotta look at the speed at the top and at the bottom. And that that create, oh, look, I got a thumbs up from Dave. That's what they've been telling us. I'm not smart enough to know if that's the case. We need that input. I think that, you know, we...
Well, what they're, what they're saying is it's faster at the top than it is on the bottom. So it's shutting off. So just increase the speed at the top. You know? So we should increase it from 4 to 5 or 6 or 7 or whatever, whatever the numbers is.
Well, I think we have to take those two things and then give this. So I think we're all, I think we all agree that we, that, and I would hope that everyone on this call would agree that if we, if we expand the, if we, if we propose expanding the shut off from this to this as far as the way the wind blows as a starting place, that that's better. And that we have to figure out is, on the margin, do we, can we, you know, is it appropriate to tweak the wind speed? Like, so this is the wind and it's blowing all the time and here's all the speeds. Can we bring it down to here to balance the costs and still address the prob, uh, the problems as much as possible? And I think there's a calculation. I don't think, I think the five of us need input on that. Is that fair? You don't agree? You don't have to agree.
No, yeah. I do.
Okay.
I don't wanna step on, I think, Karen Conley had, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Karen.
And sorry. At, at the risk of being simplistic, I like to go back to what is the problem? And the problem is people can't sleep at night. Not everyone, but enough people that it bothers me that they can't sleep at night. And so I would rather look at this as a time thing. Between 11 and 6:00 AM, it's just shut off. And I'm willing to consider, is it shut off for six months of the year or 12 months of the year? And then we need to figure out how much it will cost. And I certainly don't know all the contractual obligations that are all of a sudden looming in terms of Situate Wind. It didn't occur to me that they had contracts with, to supply energy. I, I just didn't think about it. But if I look at it just from a point of view of, if we were to shut it off, like I said, I'm not suggesting we shut it off completely and take it down. I do think that we should look at shutting it down between 11 and 6, six months of the year or maybe 12 months a year. What will it cost us and how can the town finance it? And I would suggest, and I know people don't like it when I say it, but I would suggest, I've talked to enough people who would be willing to support an operational override to make the town whole in terms of, you know, the money that we would be losing and the money we'd have to pay to Situate Wind to do this. And the numbers that I looked at that I think got sent out were not so big that an override would be a major problem for a lot of people. So I, I just, I like to make things as simple as possible and that's all I'll say.
Mar? Oh, I'm sorry. Who's first?
Andrew was waving his finger.
Andrew? I was writing notes, sorry.
No, I mean, I guess I, going back, and I totally agree that I don't know enough about the wind speed at the, I understand that it's more at the top than the bottom. If we're at 11 or 12 and we're, it's not, I know my watch. I know the time. You know, looking, we're talking about $130,000 difference. I mean, this is, this is not, we're not crossing the Rubicon here in the two differences between the $70,000 curtailment or the, the $230,000. And if you look at it, if you went from, instead of 10 to 6, went to 11, you're looking at about $29,000 per hour to do the average. So you're looking at about $200,000 per year. We're not talking a humongous difference here. And it's simple, it's easy, people get it. And it's, the problem won't be solved, but I'm with you. Sometimes the best solutions is when everyone's a little bit unhappy.
True. So Andrew, all we make is $300,000 a year on it. So that's all of it.
I mean, is...
And the town voted, I, I mean, I know that there are a dozen people on this call that are impacted by this, but the whole town voted many times in favor of this.
I, I understand that. This still may be the closest wind turbine in America to a residential house. And I don't think we knew that 10 years ago. Just three months ago in Ohio, they just voted for setbacks. 3,000 feet. There's legislation in states all over the, the country. 650 feet, it's, we didn't know enough 10 years ago. This is not, this, this, it's, Falmouth just took bears down, all these other places, because it's so close. And we're trying, doing the best that we can to try and help. It's, I don't think this is anyone's, no one did anything nefarious or, I just, we don't think we knew enough. But that's where I think we're coming to that. And I just feel bad 'cause you're right. We're in a rock and a hard place and the contract is tough. I just don't, if you think of all the time, is this worth the money that we're spending on this?
We don't get paid very much, Andrew.
Well, Jim, let me ask Jim or Nancy, I know Nancy's still on, is, is, I mean, walk us, walk us through that scenario. We say, you know what? We're just gonna turn off at night. And I'm not proposing we do that. But if we said, all right, we're gonna just turn it off at night, you know, let people get a good night's sleep and, and, and move on and it's gonna cost 200 and whatever. What do we, what do we say for, uh, you know? So let's say it's 230,000, is that, is that right? Yeah, $230,000 a year. What does that look like? I know Nancy did some analysis on this. How do we, assuming, assuming we can come to terms with Situate Wind, which is another big component of it. Let's say we say that and we're gonna go, okay, it estimates 230. How does that get paid for? What does that impact as far as town finances?
Bring it up now, Nancy. She had that off the top of her head while I tried to find the document.
One of the concerns would be if they're, contractually, if we're gonna have any payments that we're gonna have to make to them to make them, to make them whole. That would be one of my concerns. The other thing we talked about, or emailed about was that what the current use is of those funds and the main use for them is as an offset to the exclusion impact of the middle school and of the public safety complex. That's $100,000 a year. It's not, it was, was not a town meeting vote. It was just a commitment that was made at the time that the town has followed for the last six years, which has been approximately a $74 savings over the six years to the average single-family taxpayer, single-family home taxpayer. This year it was a $12 impact. So is it making or breaking anyone? No, but that would probably be, would have to be set aside because you wouldn't be making enough revenue and you'd need to keep that, the funds that you already have in the revolving fund, which is about $800,000 right now in accumulated balance to ride out those few years where you're not getting that revenue.
Okay. Thank you for that analysis. Um, all right, we're all mulling here. Do we want to, we, I know there are other things that we can, we can talk about on this topic. Should we, I know that, there, I know there are people that are dying to jump in on this conversation. Would the board like to open it to the public for some comments before we continue with this deliberation on this topic? Is there any objection to that? Nope? Okay. So what I'd like to do and is, we're gonna be, I'd like to have, focus this conversation on the topic we are on right now, which is, we're talking about revising the curtailment plan in order to address as many concerns as possible. And so I will open it up. We'll, if you can raise your hand or wave. I'd like to have everyone have one turn. I know, Dave, you can go first. But knowing Mr. Darty, I will, I wanna just caution you that we wanna make sure everyone that wants to have a, make a statement, contribute, contribute. So we'll have you make, have your time and then I'm gonna ask you to yield so that we can hear from as many people as possible. Is that acceptable, Mr. Darty? Is everybody okay with Mr. Darty going? Okay. And if you, if you go to the participant button, you can raise hand and I'll, I'll just scroll down and, and call in folks in, in that order. So we will ask Mr. Darty to unmute. And, hi David, how's Florida?
Well, it's warmer than you have it there.
Yeah, I'll stay there 'cause it's kinda scary up in Situate right now.
Well, we have...
Would you like to comment on this deliberation?
Yeah, I'm gratified to see a few of you, like Mr. Goodrich, who believes that it's difficult to break out wind speed and direction. You know, that, 'cause you have so many factors involved in that. And I'm happy to see he says, look, it's crazy to try and figure it out. Plus this thing is too close. 640 feet from the nearest person.
Right.
It, I'm gonna say something that the rest of the group probably won't like. The best thing would be to shut it down entirely because it's too close to people. But, that said, a nighttime shutdown completely all night long would be acceptable to me personally. I don't know about everybody else. I wanna educate you about one thing because there seems to be a lot of confusion about this wind speed business. If you look at when the complaints came in, when we complain, we only know what the wind speed is down at the ground. That wind turbine is 287 feet, the hub of it, above ground, which is nearly a 30-story building. And if you look at the data that comes from the wind turbine at the time of the complaints, it's usually two to three times and if not greater than the wind speed in the ground. So if it's 10 miles an hour, the ground's 30 miles an hour up at the turbine. The turbine is producing 60, 70, 80% of its potential power at a minimum when we get these problems. But it's quiet at ground level so we can hear it. So effectively trying to say that you can have a wind speed deterrent, relatively speaking, at the hub, won't work. Because what the conditions are when it bothers us is when the turbine is really cranking up some power 'cause the wind is high up there, but it's low at the, at the ground speed. And this is quite evident if you look at all of the complaints. So I agree that, that, you know, wind speed is not a factor. You shouldn't be looking at, into that. And you should be looking at saying, shut it down if you're gonna do it at nighttime, either from all directions or from half the gradient, like you say, from south, southwest to north, northwest, from 7 to 11, as you wanna put it. Yeah. But forget about wind speed, as Mr. Goodrich said. That, that's not a way to look at it. And I could talk on and on and on.
I know you can.
It should never have been built. You go through the vetting process, you would've seen your complaints for people that's seen this. It's too close to people, even the closest one at 640 feet. And even this, this shutting it down when the wind is from that direction won't help the people that are really close to it.
Okay. We're gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt.
Shadow flicker, infrasound, other issues. Shut it down. The longer you can shut it down, the, the best.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Darty. Yeah, I wanna keep it, I mean, we will, we will get on to some of the other issues, but I think we need to really compartmentalize to make progress. And we certainly, you know, it is there. So we, you know, whether it was built or not, this board can't do anything about that right now is what, is what we're, you know, we're starting from. Is there someone else that would like? I don't see any little blue hands over here. I see, I assume that's Joanne. Okay. Are the resident, Joanne, I will get to you. I just wanna make sure, because technically not a resident, if there's a resident that would like to comment, I'd like to let them jump in front of you. Joanne, I will get to you. I will go to Mr. Kelly's hands up. I hope you understand. All right, I'm unmuting. Mr. Kelly, how are you? I, I technically, I know Lorraine's probably sitting there screaming. If you wouldn't mind giving your name, for the record, your name and address. I forgot to do that. Mr. Darty, I think we have yours.
Hello, Karen, and hello, everybody on the board. My name is Jerry Kelly. I live at 56 Moreland Road in Situate. I have two questions. One, who paid for the Epsilon study? And two, when does the contract with Situate Wind Limited Liability Corporation expire?
So the contract, the Epsilon study was paid for from proceeds from, from the wind turbine operating enterprise fund or whatever it's called. So the town paid for it.
Thank you.
And the contract, the original contract expires, I believe, January 4th, 2025.
Thank you.
And within the contract, though, I will say that there is a, that it requires both parties to work in good faith to discuss a five-year extension. But the extension cannot occur without both parties agreeing. That was one of the questions we researched.
Thank you.
That was it? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other residents that would like to ask a question? Carrie Flynn? If you could give your name and address, please.
Hi, yeah, I'm Carrie Flynn. I live at 111 Gilson Road. I just wanna make two quick points. First of all, thank you all very much for taking up this topic and listening to us. I know I have communicated with many of you on the board separately, but two things I wanted to mention, one of which is, there seems to be an assumption that the number of complaints is reflective of people's approval or disapproval of what's going on. I can tell you that all of my neighbors on Gilson Road, every single one of them wanted to be on this call. They have not necessarily sent in complaints because their level of frustration with the progress we've made has been so high. So I just wanna mention that, you know, there are some of us on this call tonight, but this is a no means representative of the number of people who are affected by the flicker and the noise. Particularly for me, I work in Boston. Now that I'm working for home, from home since last March, the flicker is ridiculous. I have to actually move rooms to, you know, to do my Zoom calls for work. So I just wanted to raise that. And thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Any other residents? Alan?
Hi.
Name and address, please.
Ellen Casper, 120 Gilson Road. I'm sure you're very familiar with me. I send lots and lots of emails. It's nice to hear everyone being so congratulatory and caring about people's health. And I'm just very, very frustrated with all of this. I work in Boston. I work on a COVID floor. I have had my sleep disturbed for, since this thing was turned on. And we have sent email after email after email explaining why the curtailment plan was not working. And it seems that you don't read the emails. Joanne has sent so many very detailed emails to explain it. I mean, I understand it now and I am not an engineer. And we have sent, we also sent a Freedom of Information Act email explaining why that whole testing scenario was, it's just appeared to be all rigged. I mean, it was incorrect. So it's very frustrating trying to get anything done and hearing the same thing over and over and over and over again. Mr. Vignani has been there the whole time. He understands how difficult it is to sleep with noise. He's taken care of it in his own home. And he's the one that goes and deals with Mr. Dean and leaves us out in the cold, not being able to discuss our problems in, you know, all together to try and figure it out. So we go back and forth.
Let me just interrupt you for a second there and just say, I, we absolutely hear your frustration. We do get your daily emails. We understand that this board is convened exactly for that reason, that we are, are addressing, we are committed to trying to address the situation. So we, you know, rehashing past decisions really doesn't help solve the problem. And so that's why, you know, we would like, what we want to discuss right now is we're talking about the curtailment plan. We're all agreeing that it needs to be improved because it's not working correctly. And that we're, what we're now talking about is how do we do that correctly? And, you know, as Mr. Darty said, you know, if we turn it off at night, then you guys could sleep, right? So that, that's one solution. So, you know, I, 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 I don't, I don't mean to sound like I'm scolding or not appreciating your frustration and concern, but I, I do want you to recognize that that's what we're trying to do right now. So.
The thing is, we have sent so many emails explaining why it doesn't work and the fact that their direction and the wind speed doesn't work. So to rehash it over and over and over again, it's frustrating because we, you know.
Part of that is that we are not allowed to deliberate in private. And that's one thing that I would think that you guys would all appreciate is that we have to have these conversations in public. And part of that is because, you know, we might have to rehash because we want to make sure we get it right. So yes, we've said things and we acknowledge that there are things that could have been done before or different or whatever. We can't change that. So I'd like to, to try to keep this conversation on what we can do now. Okay? Does that make sense?
Yep, then it just needs to be turned off. I mean, that's really the only thing that will work for all of us.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Are there other residents that would like to jump on? I'm not seeing any hands. Oh, Valerie. Oh, wait, hold on, you're muted, hold on. All right, there you are, if you could.
All right, hi. Valerie Vitale, 34 Driftway. I've had noise from the turbine at my house in the summer, in the winter, in December, with all the windows closed. I was, I sit right here at my desk, which I can see the turbine from here, which is a travesty in and of itself. But I hear that noise at night, sitting at my computer in the daytime, trying to work. I hear that noise in the wintertime, in the summertime. It's the wrong turbine and the wrong location. And if you as a board and the Board of Health cannot correct the problems that affect our health, then I think the worst thing, wrong turbine, wrong location, is a wrong contract. And have you looked at the contract? Have you seen that it ties, if it ties your hands so that you can't protect your citizens? I think you have a legal issue here. I don't understand how this goes on for years and years and years. Every other town up and down the coast has protected their citizens. So your effort now, at long last, how many years? To mitigate some of our issues. Part of my problem with not sleeping at night, when I hear it, is my anger. Because we have a beautiful home in a beautiful location. We've been here for 40 years. And to have this thing plunked in a scenic area facing our house and to have the noise drilled towards our home, the acoustics of the cliff and the golf course and the river just make the impact worse. And nobody, there was no expertise put into figuring that out. And so now you have to go backwards and figure out why this travesty happened and try to patch and repair. And Mr. Vignani, you sound like you work for Situate Wind. And that is heartbreaking to me.
So thank you, Valerie, for your comments. I will reiterate that I don't even know where to start. So it, to, to Alan's point, we've had these conversations before. The, the citing, the permitting, all of those boxes were checked and, and, and done appropriately, as Tony, I think, pointed out. It was years and years of stuff. So I've said this to many of the people on this call before and I'll reiterate it. And then I would like to open to the board because, to see if they have additional comments. And I did promise Joanne. We have a problem in this, in this situation. The problem in this situation is that this turbine exists. We have looked at the contract, we look at the contract. My goal, and this is my personal, this is me, I can't speak for the board, I'll let them speak. My goal is to try to find relief for you and everyone on this call. It is not, if I, if we as a board said, we're going to go and try to figure out how to turn this off forever, the contract will be up before we win that fight. And I personally think it's much more productive to say, if the solution is turn it off at night, if, what, what can we accomplish? Because enough, as, as Alan pointed out, we haven't accomplished a lot in, in resolving these issues in the, in the past. So, you know, it's fine to say, you know, yeah, if it didn't exist, there wouldn't be a problem. But I would posit that, you know, if there, if the thing's only got four more years left, it's going to be, if we, if we went that route, we, that turbine would still be running for the next four years. So I just, that's my two cents and I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I, I don't want to diminish any of this. I'm really just trying to, to reiterate that we are trying to find a solution that will address things now. With, before I go, Joanne, I know you're just, you're jumping up and down. Does the board want to jump in at this point? Because I don't want, and I'm only one of five here. Anyone? Want to, Tony?
Sure, I'll, I'll reply. And Mrs. Fortam, I'm sorry you think I work for Situate Wind. That clearly is not the case. I'm the one that, that tried to get this mitigation in place three years ago and tried to put, push it through there. I'm just, I, I've, I've looked at all of the situations. I've sat in front of all of your houses dozens of times. I've spoken to your neighbors. I've spoken to people that live right next door to you and they don't hear the thing, they don't hear it at all. So that it's, that doesn't mean that you don't hear it and that doesn't mean that it's not real to you. And that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to resolve. Or trying, we can't resolve it, right? Because we, before I was a selectman, some, we signed a contract that the whole town voted on to put that turbine in there. So, you know, we're doing what we can now, taking into your, your discomfort into consideration to try to find out what we can do. So I'm, I'm trying not to be the bad guy, but I am trying to look at it realistically from my position on the board and the other impacts that it has to do with. So, you know, I, I apologize, I'm sorry that you feel that way, but that's not, that's not my motive. I get nothing out of this. You know, I'm just trying to do the right thing for all parties.
Yeah, not that Tony needs any defending, but I certainly want to speak on behalf of, you know, he has helped me understand a lot of this because it's, it's, I'm not an engineer, right? Really just, that's not my forte. And, you know, Ellen, maybe you expect me after three years of listening and reading your emails, just your complaints, that I should be able to figure this all out. You know, I'm sorry, it's my shortcoming. So Tony has been very instrumental in looking at the data and the facts and helping us work through this. And I agree with Karen that, you know, look, let's figure out a curtailment plan that works for all of you so you can sleep at night. And that's really what, where I want to focus. And, and I want to make sure, you know, when we're hearing from different folks who aren't from town, what's the expertise? What's your certification? Who you hired by? You know, I, I take issue with having comments come from out-of-towners who don't live here and who aren't experiencing this. So I want to understand all those ramifications if we're going to give out-of-towners an opportunity to speak here, Karen, because I, I just, one of my concerns with that. Yeah. Yeah, I, I invited Mark, I'll get to you next. I invited Joanne to speak because many of the people on this call have asked her to speak on her behalf. And otherwise, I, I agree with you that this is resident issue. So I would like to, is the board want to make any other comments? Mr. McKeever would like to speak? Okay, Mark, let me unmute you, name and, name and address, sir. Wait, you're still, oh, there you go.
Mark McKeever, 151 Driftway. To me, and I'm not a doctor, I'm, I'm not an engineer. It's quite obvious, and Mr. Goodrich hit the nail on the head. Shut the thing off at night, 12 months a year. And you folks need to figure out the financial side of it. You unfortunately got put into a terrible situation by the prior select people who approved this foolish thing. And unfortunately, and I appreciate you all trying to help us, but it's such a, it's such a simple solution. Shut the thing off at night, 12 months a year, and figure it out. It's simple. It's not rocket science. We don't sleep. I can hear the thing right now ripping through my walls. My kids are up, they can't sleep. This is, this is like a joke. This is like, it, it's getting to be just, this is a joke. Shut the thing down so we all can sleep. It's like, I, you know, and, and I understand it, well, this money and that. No, it's money. Find, find a way to come up with more money and shut the thing off. I'm so, I'm so disgusted. This is like, this is, this is just so wrong. And, and I'm just so pissed. It's so wrong in so many ways. You all know it's wrong and just do the right thing. Shut the thing down from 11 to 6 so we can sleep. You all get to sleep at night. I don't. And it's wrong. And until somebody, like, I have to lose my cool to, to, to let you people know it's wrong? Like, for crying out loud. Do the right thing and shut the thing down. Shut it off.
All right.
Enough is enough here, like enough.
Mark, thank you for keeping on topic. I appreciate that. And I just, I do want to point out that, you know, we did inherit the situation, but it was also, and I'm sure that the other board members will point out, it was not just a board decision, it was an entire town decision. So, you know, we, I receive, and, and just, just so folks know, we get a lot of emails, obviously, on this topic. Not all are complaints. In fact, we've received several, people have written to us and said, why are you guys talking? I mean, and I'm going to be just very frank about it. Why are you guys talking about this? The whole town wanted this. The whole town thought it was great. And, you know, we're, we're getting benefits that are community-wide. So just so, just so you know, people, we do get those comments. And to those people, I personally say, yeah, but we have more information now. And that's what we're trying to deal with now. And I would like to invite Joanne to, I think, if we will have you, give you your time if no one else has a hand raised and I don't see anyone else. I would ask you to, Dave wants another round. Let's go to Joanne. I would ask you to be respectful of the topic. And if you could give your name and address. And the topic is, to remind everybody, as we're talking about the curtailment, what can we do today?
Thank you, Karen. Can you hear me?
Yes, name and address, please, for the record.
Joanne Leveque, 52 Hound Stitch Lane in Duxbury. And I've been involved with neighbors in Situate and attended most, if not all, Board of Health meetings on the topic back in 2012, 13, and 14. So I have a history here. To answer Maury's concern, I'm not paid by anyone. There is no funding associated with me. I'm doing this just as a public service. Consider myself a public health advocate. And 10 years ago, when I became involved in this, I never expected that I'd be here in 2021, still discussing and still advocating for suffering neighbors. I do want to speak specifically to the curtailment plan issues. But if I, if you don't mind, since it's been raised, I think four times tonight, I think it's important, I hear this a lot, and Karen, you just spoke to it, and Tony has spoken to it, that this notion of majority rule, the, the, the majority of the town voted for this. I agree with that statement, but I would also say that we are not a pure democracy. We are a constitutional republic and we abide by laws. And further, I would say that if the majority of the community that voted to approve this project voted so because they, they felt assured that there would be no adverse community impacts. I think that's sort of the follow-up statement that's sort of left out of the equation. So I kind of find it unhelpful at this point, just to kind of keep going back to, well, the majority of the town voted for this. The other thing I would say is Mr. Vignani made the comment that Situate Wind is being a good neighbor. They don't have a contractual obligation to shut down. Having read the contract, the power purchase agreement, the lease agreement, I would disagree slightly with that because according to the lease agreement and the power purchase agreement, they need to adhere to all applicable legal requirements. So all bylaws, all, all state laws, all local laws, all regulations need to be adhered to by this facility. Which is why in my mind, it's so important for you folks to get a, a, a real handle on this whole compliance testing business. But compliance testing is only speaking to regulatory noise. That's audible noise in the DBA range. There is noise created by wind turbines that is not regulated by the state of Massachusetts.
Joanne, I want to interrupt you because you promised you would keep on talking.
Okay. I just want to say.
Curtailment, right?
I just wanted to point out that it is not true that they don't have a contractual obligation to, to not shut down.
But thank you. We have, we have, we have inquired on that subject with our, our town council. And when we get to that kind of conversation, we will, we will come back to it.
Okay. So I don't know if you have as part of your binder, the October 2nd, 2017 log that Jen Keefe, Al Bangert, and Situate Wind put together for the town to help you evaluate this very question of the curtailment plan.
But probably, but.
Okay.
Let's talk about what's relevant to the conversation.
Okay, so Mr. Vignani's.
What are we going to do better?
Perfect. So Mr. Vignani spent a lot of time talking about wind direction as needing some sort of massaging or changing. I would suggest very strongly, based on all my experience and in particularly studying Situate's curtailment issues and the logs put together by Jen Keefe, that wind direction is a bit of a distraction. And I'll give you one example. On this log, I'll take a date that's on the log. Let's see here. All right, September 18th of 2015 is a complaint date. The reported wind direction at the ground level, these are reported by the neighbors, was west, southwest, and west. If you look over, it's an Excel spreadsheet. If you look over to the information Situate Wind provided about what the wind direction was up at the hub height, you find that they reported that the wind was east. So you have two completely different wind directions. So my point here is I'm going to support Mr. Goodrich in his observation that the complexities here make it very difficult to pin down a wind direction. Aside from that, many months ago, in response to one of the noise complaints, I gave you an excerpt, a citation from the Kingston Acoustical Report, which cited the fact that when you have residents located within 2,000 feet of an industrial-scale wind turbine, wind direction does not matter. So I would contend again that wind direction is a distraction when you're talking about the curtailment plan. That's point number one.
Okay, make it quick, Joanne, because it's 10:30 at night and we actually stopped.
Well, maybe I might ask if you're going to put this off because the SDEP has not responded, which I'm not at all surprised about, given my experience with them, which is unfortunate as far as their responsiveness to communities. I, I think it, it would be really helpful if I could somehow help in some way, just boil this down for you so you can see. You have all the information you need to know what needs to be done, in my estimation.
I, I, I don't disagree with you and I appreciate your offer for help. We, we understand what our limitations as a board are and as, you know, Maury said.
Okay, the other.
Okay, we got to move on. Oh. Sorry, I didn't do that. Great, did you have one more quick thing? Oh, wait, you have to unmute.
The other document that I would, that I would point you to that would be most helpful would be the power, sound power curve that was provided by Situate Wind. I also share that with, with all of you.
Okay, yeah, we, we.
Okay, so, 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 so just to be clear, the curtailment plan that's been in effect for the last three and a half years has shut the turbine off when the amount of power being produced was 7%.
Okay.
If you look at this, if you look at the log, there isn't one complaint that correlates with wind, uh, power output of 7%.
Right, thank you, which is what we said at the outset, which is why we're trying to fix it.
Okay.
I'm going to move on.
It's all right here.
Okay, thanks, Joanne. Mr. Darty, very quickly, you get the, you get that and clean up here.
I will. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'll make it very quick.
I'll make it very quick. I won't make it in engineering terms. So I'll make it very simplistic. In regards to this testing program and the DEP and all that business in Epsilon, realistically speaking, do you really think if situations like we have here in Situate with homes that are located 640 feet from this thing showed compliance, that there wouldn't be wind turbines all over Massachusetts closer than that they are right now? Can you really put any credibility on the results of a noise testing program which shows that the house properties that close are in compliance realistically? Come on. Because they would build them. Because the people out there would want to put them in to make money and communities that would want the money.
Okay. I do...
If this thing were properly investigated, what I'm trying to say, whether it's Epsilon or DEP or, or protocols, you would find that there's gross errors in that testing program. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Um, for it, it is 10:29, and we do have a long way to go before we sleep, to praise great literature. Um, we have heard from the residents. We have discussed, um, I think we're in agreement that the curtailment plan is not correct and that we need to approve it. We've discussed having it um, part of the way, some of the way, different hours, or all together at night. You guys have not had a chance to, you, to, to talk about it. David, put it down. Um, I'd like to just open it up to the board to reflect on, on what we've discussed this evening. Or if, if somebody would like to propose a proposal. If you, if you think you have enough information in your head right now, and you think you can propose something, you're, the floor is yours.
I mean, I, if I can just jump on why the board's contemplating it. Sorry, Andrew, I think I jumped on you.
Mr. Bedrow.
Um, I think if the board has a proposal, um, before you vote on it, I think we have to go back to Situate Wind and see if it's something that they would live with.
Right.
You know, if, if you say, "Shut it down every night, all the time", is that going to violate their agreements with their people that they have contracts with? It will, it will violate the contract they have with us. We can go back and fix that contract. Okay? But I disagree with Mrs. Levesque that we have the ability to do that. They have to be in compliance with the law. The law in the town of Situate says the noise has to be in compliance with the DEP regulations. So if we reject the Epsilon study, we still have to have some sort of basis that they're not in compliance with that standard. That's the standard. I, I, I don't have to agree with it. I don't think it's, I don't even think DEP agrees with it. But that's the standard that's in our bylaws, that they have to meet for noise. So, you know, if I'm looking at shutting it off certain hours, all the time, every night, year-round, I don't know how they make their power production that they're required to make under their contracts. So then we're back to what you talked about, Karen. We're into litigation that's going to go through the length of the contract. Or do we try to find a shut-off that is going to help the neighbors, but it's still something that we can put into place in the short term very quickly? I guess that's what I would throw out to the board.
That's, that's actually a really helpful thing, Jim. I mean, yeah, we can look at this as sort of three levels of, of, of attack. One is, what, what do we think we can reasonably do right now that isn't, is, uh, is going to provide some relief and not, and not tip the cart over, basically? Two, if we think it should be bigger than that, if that, if that curtailment plan should be bigger than that, then, you know, does the board want to have that conversation and enter into discussions with Situate to see if, if it can be effect, um, put into place? Um, if, if we, if we take the big bite first, we're not, we're not, we're, we're kicking it down the road again. And, and, and I, that doesn't sit well with me, quite honestly. Um, that's me. Yeah. Andrew?
What, what is the, you know, what is the proper way to, to enter into some sort of a renegotiation? I mean, to see what, what is the art of the possible? I agree with, with, with Jim and what Tony said, because we have to talk about the art of the possible. And I see some folks from Situate Winter on now, but what, I mean, do we vote to say we have Town Council or Jim talk to them? Like, what's the proper protocol to even broach the subject properly, um, to say, "Hey, what", because it's not in the contract now, so what could we do? Maybe 11 to 6:00, or maybe midnight to 6:00 would be okay. I don't know. But like, what's the proper legal way to do this? I don't know.
Jim, how would you recommend proceeding to have those conversations?
Uh, I would do it probably through my office with the representative from the board on it. That's the, you can't have the whole board do it because that's a violation of the open meeting law, but have the discussions with Situate Wind. Um, you know, again, I, if we say, "Shut it down", that's, that's a vote the board could take. Is it going to shut the turbine down? Absolutely not. Okay? It's just going to put it into litigation, and the turbine's going to spin, as you spoke about earlier, Karen. Okay? So what can we do that can provide relief now to the residents? And that's what Andrew talked about, the art of the possible. So we can ask Situate Wind, 11 to 6:00 every night, year-round. Is that possible? 11 to 6:00 every night in the summertime. Is that possible? Is that something that you can do without being in violation of your agreements? I, I don't know. And we've talked to them about that, and really their response has been, "Tell us what you want, and we will have to look into whether or not that's possible." Again, if they're in violation of the contract with us, that's easy. We just negotiate a change of the contract to bring them back in compliance based upon what we're asking them to do. It's the other contracts and the power agreements that they have to supply the credits and things that would be more, more in-depth and beyond our control at that point.
Okay. You know, as Mr. McKeever says, it's, you know, you want to just say, "Find the money and make it", you know, do it, but these are, these are the constraints. It's like, if, if we, if we took the radical route, I don't, I don't think we'd affect any change. They are the possible. So, um, Mara, Karen, would you, you want to add anything to this?
No, I think what Jim is saying is right. I mean, you know, we need to know what, what we can do. And then we have to figure out where we can find the money, because we are going to lose money on it. How can we find the money as a board or as a town? And, um, you know, so...
Okay. So what if, what if I were to, I, I, I would like to have the board have, I think, we, we don't need to, we, you know, we can vote on stuff, but it's not, it's not going to be meaningful until we take it to the next step. Um, I would like to just get, um, a consensus, I think, um, that we, um, immediate, I would, I'm going to propose this, that we immediately approach Situate Wind to revise the curtailment, the existing curtailment plan, and expand, um, expand the, um...
Call it the shut-off.
The compass. Thank you. The compass. Um, to a, to a much greater degree, the 11:07 or whatever, however, that, the, the south, the, the westerly things. I think that it's pretty consistent cost-wise to what has already been approved, and I think we would have, you know, a high probab, I, I would guess, and I, we won't know until we talk them, that we would have a pretty high probability being able to do that in the short term. Um, because it's not really different from what we discussed before, but it would expand it. And that I would then propose that the board enter into analysis and conversation about, and I want you guys to fill in the blank, whether or not it should be more than that. Should it be all night, every night, uh, all, all year-round? And I, I'm, I'm not sure I'm, I know where I'm on that one. So I will leave it to you guys to see if there's a fill-in-the-blank for the next step that we can get consensus on. Well, I guess first one is, is step one, do we have consensus about going, going, trying to go immediately to expand the curtailment plan?
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't, um, you know, I don't know why we, I don't, I don't know why we would make it a two-step process. I mean, I would rather just go to, you know, what is that final, um, shutdown? So if we, if we agree as a board to go back to Situate Wind and say, "Tell us what the full implications are of, you know, turning it down, turning it off, all wind directions from midnight to 6:00 AM", whatever, like, whatever that, those parameters are that, that we want to consider as a board, um, I think we'll get to a solution quicker than, you know, I, I remember looking at those logs and the challenge that the Board of Health had with, you know, the different wind speeds, and I think we're going to find ourselves in the same situation because there's too much, um, questioning, you know, the wind speeds that the complaints are coming from, from the, um, residents don't match the wind speeds that Situate Wind is saying are actually happening at the top. So it gets too complicated to figure out what are the appropriate wind speeds that Situate Wind uses, right? To make sure that the proper shutdown is happening during those times where the residents are being impacted. Um, so I would, you know, propose going back with, to Situate Wind with, um, some sort of final solution to look at, if you will. I, I'm not in favor of a two-step process. I'd rather get to the endgame quicker.
Okay. Others? Can you hear me? I had to put my thing on.
I concur, and I'm, I'm, I'm fine with even, and, and I think it also, I think it's important for us as a board to, to, to let them know how serious we are that we're taking these and by voting on something like that, um, that it's not just, "Oh, let's just let someone negotiate", but we think this is serious enough, right, to go 11 to 6:00 or midnight to 6:00. You can compromise. That's fine. Um, so... Yeah. I, I like that. I like that stuff.
Tony?
I, I mean, I think that's what we're here for. I think, I, I, I think, I think that there's data there to be a little bit more precise than, than we're thinking. Um, I don't know the answers, but we know when they complain about the sound problem, what the thing is reading. You know, you know when they complain on, on this evening that it hit a peak of 7.5 milliliters per milli, millimeters per second or whatever it is. Um, but I, I think we should, I, I think a start would be to say, i- if it's coming from the west, shut it off at night from 11:00 to 6:00, you know, during that, that summertime period, from whatever it is now, uh, June through October. You know, that, that's what I think our next step in terms of what is a reasonable adjustment to what we have now. Um, and if we can get some sort of clarification in terms of what a proper wind speed would be, then we could do that. I mean, I'm looking at the ones on the days when they, when there were complaints that it got up to as much as 7.6. So, you know, the 4.5 clearly isn't the right number if it's 7.6. So, uh, if you want to get more concise like that, then you can. But, um, you know, uh, the next step that I would say for us would be, if it's coming from the west and blowing towards them during those night hours of that time of year, shut it off.
Regardless of speed.
I, I don't have a good indication of speed. I, I know that on the days that I looked at, you know, nothing got above 8. So if you wanted to try and put something on there and say 8, then put 8.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand if you're saying.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what the board, I don't know what the board's opinion of that is. Um, you know, at, at some speed, you're not going to hear the wind turbine because the winds, because it's a hurricane outside. Um, so, um, so that would be kind of my, my recommendation would be, let's say it's 8, and it's, uh, coming from the west, and it's, it's from the current hours. I would keep it at 11:00, not at 12:00. Um, and I would, I would say during the timeframe that we have in place now. Now, this is just for the sound.
Mara, did you, you, you didn't like the two-stage approach, but what do you think about the, you know, discussion of the parameters? Tony's saying, "We don't have to throw the whole baby out. Let's, let's, let's nuance it better." Uh, Andrew's saying, "We're not, we're, why, why do that? Let's, let's just address the whole..."
I'm actually, I'm fine with the nuances. However, I think it needs to be year-round at night. I don't think there seems to be a lot of differences from the winter to the summer months for many of the folks, because they're still complaining now, and we're in January 4th. They couldn't sleep last night. So, um, you know, I think let's do a hybrid.
Yeah. I mean, at some point, you're going to take a bite off that's going to be too much.
Right. I understand that.
And that's what we have to figure out. But we have to start with a consensus from the board of, what do we want to ask for? So that, you know, we're all in agreement. Um, Karen, do you?
I just, I just want to make sure I understand what Mara's proposing. Mara, are you proposing westerly, night, year-round?
Yes.
Okay.
Above, below 8.
Below 8, or whatever that parameter is that...
I'm just trying to make sure that I have the parameters that we're talking about.
Uh, Ms. Conley, would you like to, um, to give us where your head's at on this?
My head is at, "Shut it off at night, all year-round. Let's get the numbers, and let's find out if that's doable for Situate Wind to be able to, if they've got issues related to contractual, you know, agreements to sell power, whatever. We, we're only speculating. We don't know. And until we know that, you know, I can't, I can't go any, much further than that. Um, but I just think, I'd rather go simple, go big, and, and that's just my, that's the way I feel about it.
Um...
I, I agree with, uh, Karen Conley. I think, um, I mean, uh, yeah, I, I think we have to keep it simple. I don't know enough on, on, on the engineering. They could come back and say, "No, see you later", and then we could have that discussion, and maybe we have to do something different or something else, right? They could say, "No", and maybe there's an alternate plan or something else, but, um, they might say yes. And I know there's a financial implication. Um, but then let's have that discussion about what that means and what that really is going to curtail. But that's where I am. But...
Okay. Well, I don't disagree with, 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 um, with, you know, always ask, and you can always get told no. My only concern is I just think that that's a bigger conversation, and it's going to take a ti, it's going to take time. And that's why I'm sort of like, let's, let's start smaller to get it, get something done. Um, and then work, that's why I proposed the two-step. So, um, you know, because I just, you know, I don't want to be having, you know, to, to, many points made here tonight. It's like, we start this conversation with them, and we, you know, three months from now, nothing's changed. I'm not going to feel good about that. You know? Um, okay. Tony?
Well, let's ask them for both scenarios and see what they say.
Okay.
So those are the, those are the two, you know, the high point and the low point. You know, and, and at some point, we're going to have to, you know, at some point, this is going to have to go before the town.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, so if, if all of a sudden, I don't know that this board can decide to shut off that revenue stream without the town vote. So, um...
Yeah. Well, there's a tipping point on that as well, because if, if, if there's, if we have to go, as Mark McKeever said, if we have to go find the money for it, at some point, we don't have the authority to spend that kind of money without asking town meeting. So...
Which is fine.
Yeah, that's just fine. I have no problem with that. So I like, I, I think your suggestion of going, you know, as a board, I think we've, it sounds like we have a consensus. We, we, we have, "Go big, and go home, and go practical, and get it done. Let's go to Situate Wind, have the conversation, and, um, and, and, and see if we can move the, the, and get this done." Does that sound like what we've decided? Or have consensus? Because we're not, we can't vote on it because it's not actionable. Anyone want to tweak that? Jim? Jim's looking like he wants to tweak it.
No, I just want to make sure that I understand which ones I'm going to talk to such a win for. And then if a member of the board is going to be in those conversations with me. So the, shut it off at night year-round. That's.
That's the high bar.
Okay. And then there were two other discussions. Wind speeds of eight meters per second or less. Westerly winds. One was year-round, one was in summertime.
Well, shutting it off year-round is from the west, right? Are all of the conditions are all from the west?
No, I believe the one that Karen and, Karen Conley and Andrew are advocating is it's shut off at night year-round regardless of the wind direction.
Correct. Just shut it off.
Yes.
Forget about the wind, forget about the speed from midnight to six.
So almost a third of the year, the turbine would be shut down.
Correct.
Even though it's blowing in the exact opposite direction that's causing the complaints.
That's all right. We were, Tony, we're going to set the high bar. Yeah.
Setting out the parameters.
Yeah. We're not, we're not saying.
Oh, I understand that. That just isn't logical to me.
It is to me.
It's duly noted, Mr. Vignani.
I think it makes perfect sense.
And then the low bar is turn it off westerly winds in the evening.
All points west.
All points west. Sorry. Yeah, all points west. Mara's saying year-round, Tony, you're saying in the summer, like the current curtailment. I, I tend to agree that if we're going to do it that way, that it should be year-round because we're not, you know, we know, as Mara pointed out, we know what people are being disturbed today. So I guess the question is what's the, what, if, what's the low bar? Is it just summer or is it year-round? If you're gonna.
Well, I think the low bar for us is the summer, right? That's, that's the bare minimum that we want.
Right. Is to expand it from all western, southern, sorry, it's good, it's definitely past my bedtime. Westerly winds in the summertime, 11 to 6. That's the low bar.
Wind speed or regardless?
I mean, I said wind speed, I would double the wind speed because it seemed, the current one isn't working to that eight number.
I, I, I have to say that I don't, I think we've proven that we're not smart enough to figure out wind speed. And I mean, we could bring in consultants and get it right, I suppose, but I would say we don't even, we just, I don't know. We can nuance that, but I think it's too much nuance. That's my opinion. What do you think? Top bar people, what do you think should be the low bar?
Well, summer, like Tony said.
Okay. All right. Tony, are you okay with just saying summer and, and, and tabling the conversation about wind speed till we have the sort of macro conversation about high bar, low bar?
Sure.
Okay. So Jim, you got that?
Yep.
Okay.
Although the high bar is it's off at night year-round regardless of the wind direction. This, it's off.
Correct.
Off at night.
Yeah.
The low bar is any wind from the west in the summertime during the curtailment hours.
Correct. All agreed?
Yeah, it, it does, it does, it seems like a, a weak negotiating position. It's like Oliver Twist, please sir, can I have some more? I mean, I get that's what the contract is like. But, yeah, I mean, if you think about it as a, as a negotiation, situ at wind is going to take the easiest bar. So that's all we can do.
Yeah, but they're not going to take it. We're going to have the conversation about, you know, what, if, if we say turn it off at night all the time, what does that mean to your finances? What does that have to mean to our finances? And they have been very cooperative in those conversations. And I don't, you know, I, yeah, would they rather not? Of course they don't.
But there's no scenario where their finance, we're paying for it anyways.
Right.
So the financial model doesn't change for them. It's really what, what capacity do they have to run that thing at?
Okay. Sorry, we're all migrating right now. Okay. Is the board comfortable with that? That strategy for the, the, the curtailment plan?
Well, I, I agree with Andrew. I think they're going to pick the, the low, the low bar.
Well, they're not picking, they're coming back and giving us the numbers.
We're ultimately going to choose.
So we're going at them with, this is a what if? What if this? What if that? What if this?
This isn't, this isn't a negotiation. They're on the call. They can watch this video.
Oh, I, I'm not, I don't.
So we're just asking them, where, where can they go with this?
Yeah.
Right.
So it's not, it's not like they're going to pick one. They're going to, they're going to have to come back to us and say, here's what I can do.
Right.
I have to sell 200 megawatts of this stuff a year, so I can't go to every night, blah, blah, blah.
All summer long. Right. And here's why.
Right. So from a financial standpoint, as Tony said, we make them all. But there will be a point where they will be running into conflicts with their other contracts for the energy credits. And that's where, that's where we're going to hit that.
Yeah.
From, I don't want to speak for them, but from their standpoint, that's where it gets.
I understand.
My standpoint is, okay, it's going to cost us this much money. Where are we going to get it?
Right.
What impact is that going to have? And that's back to Mr. McKeever's, find the money. But they have other obligations beyond that, that they have to meet.
I understand.
I, 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 I guess, I guess, I just want to be luminously clear with, with them. I don't want to speak for you, Karen, that I, I think, was my position is I want to get them as close to that point where they're not breaking their obligations. But I want to know precisely and clearly with whatever they're legally obligated to provide, that, that they can show us that this is their point of no return. And I feel, maybe not everyone else on the board feels, I want to get as close to that point as possible. So our curtailment plan is as aggressive as possible. That I want to make sure that that's, that's where we are. Again, I can only speak for myself. I think that's what Karen with, but.
You want, you want to get as much curtailment as you can possibly get.
Yes. All right. All right. We have to do the homework on that. I think Mr. Kelly had his hand raised and as, as a advisor to this town for a long time, I would like to go, if no one has an objection, just to ask him for his opinion on this. He's, for those who don't know, he's served for a long time, but I think is our chair for advisory. So advise us, Mr. Kelly.
First off, thank you. Thank you for taking into interest, into account the health of the citizens of, of the town. The problem that you have is you've got a counterparty here that's a limited liability corporation that I believe sells off interest to high net worth individuals. And we've got to make sure that they don't come back to you with the optimal return to these high net worth investors. It should be a reasonable return. I congratulate you folks. I think that more is better when it comes to the public health of the citizens of town when it comes to curtailment. And I thank you very much for a very open and a very studied conversation tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kelly. I appreciate that. It's hard work, as you well know. Okay, so I think we did have a couple other things we want to talk about. It's almost 11 o'clock. I think we have a, a plan and on, on how to take the next steps on curtailment. I, I think it's beneficial that I do know that there have been folks from situ at on this call, so we don't have to repeat all this. And we can just jump in with them as soon as we can get in to talk to them. And then Jim, you wanted to know who from the board can work with you on this?
If you wanted to be on the call or?
Well, I, I, any member, if any board member would like to, that, I have no objection. Tony and I have had the conversations. Tony, obviously, is the most. I'm happy to do it as the chair, but would defer if anybody's just, you know, would very much like to be in that conversation. It's a, it's a big, it's an important conversation, so I won't automatically assume that I will look for consensus on that. Anybody?
I would be honest, I don't think, I don't know if Tony wants me on it.
I nominate Tony.
No, no, I, I would suggest Andrew do it. I mean, I've spoken to them.
Yeah.
Go, go and talk and hear what they have to say.
Yep, I'm, I.
I mean, that's a good idea, too.
Yeah, I, I think that the more of us that can be involved in these conversations, the better it is for the community as well. Because, you know, it's, you know, there's five of us and we can't all be there at once. And the more, more, I think we have a consensus. And I think Andrew, if you would like to do that, I, I'd support that.
Yeah.
Anyone vote against Andrew? It's late. We can be mean.
I nominate Andrew.
I would suggest Andrew and Tony, because Tony's the one who understands this better than, than the rest of us.
Okay.
He can explain words I just, a lot of times just by me.
And there's karma to that. We got floor and ceiling.
I mean, I've learned so much, you know, with Tony again, and I know how much he does care about this issue. And I want the residents to know that, too, how much the work and effort. And I, I do appreciate all the work that he's done. It's, it has been human's work. So, thank you. That would be fun. That'd be great.
All right, we send the gentleman into the fray on that. We, I did, I know it's late, but there's another issue that I would like with assembled, we're all here, is that it was alluded to earlier and we haven't, haven't had much time, but we have explored and I've discussed with some of the folks on this call is the concern about the flicker, which is a completely different topic. Curtailment at night doesn't impact flicker during the day. Tony, I think you got some estimates if, if, I mean, they, the bottom line is it, the turbine can be calculated so that the flicker does not impact nearby residents. It may be shut off and to do that, and there's a cost to it. And I, I don't, I'm sorry, was it you, somebody, Nancy?
Yeah, I, when I, when I met with them, I asked them if they could look into eliminating the flicker component of it and what would that, what would that take? Can we shut it off? Because the flicker is, is, it's calculable. You know, it's, it's for, I'm making up these numbers a little bit. It's like two hours a day for whatever it is, for, Mr. McKeever knows better than me, but for four or five months a year, you know, whatever the sun is in eastern sky or western sky, you know, coming over on that way. So, so they went through and they could do some calculation that says it has to be shut off for whatever it is, 60 hours a year to take care of that issue. And and so they're doing calculations to find out what that is. And, and the good thing about that is, is it's, it's not dependent on the conditions. So it's not a hard shut off. It's kind of a soft shut off. So you know that you're going to shut it off from four to five on October 14th. So they can kind of eat, slow the machine down so it stops at that time and starts up after that. So, you know, that's the other component that I asked them to look into. I don't have the document in front of me, but I, Jim, I don't, do you remember the number for that? It was, something tells me like $40,000 or something.
I thought you told me $38,000.
Yeah, something.
I had to move out of my office because my roommate went to bed.
So I think, I think it's in that range, which I think is going to have to come into play you know, with, with the other plans also, you know, that, that's an added shut-off time period. So. So that is another thing that we'd have to ask them if they would, you know, take into consideration. I know that that doesn't impact as many properties, but it clearly is, you know, a nuisance to the ones that it does.
I would, I would personally like to propose that we put that in the low bar category. I think it's something that should be done personally. I think it's, you know, we, we, we can't, we can't physically move that thing right now. So how can we address that component of it? So I would like to propose to the board that we put that in the conversation, obviously. But that, that be a higher, that be a high priority as well.
I agree.
So I think you have to tell them, you know, that that's first, because eventually it's going to come down to wattage. How much wattage do they have to make on that thing to break even? And the way you're going to curtail it or, or get to their number is by, you know, instead of shutting it off all year round, then you shut it off for 10 months instead of 12 months or whatever is going to get them to that number. So if the flicker is more important, you got to say, take that off the top first. So I, I would say that we would do that. We would say, okay, deal with the flicker component. And then where can we go with, with the curtailment of the, of the night running?
Yeah. I, I, I personally would like to do, to, to come in with that as take that off the top. Does anyone disagree with that? All right. Well, that was easier than I thought. Okay, so are, are there any issue, other issues regarding the turbine? And any action the board would like to discuss at 11:04?
Nope. Good job. I think we covered a lot of ground. It's not easy.
It is not easy. And I do appreciate everyone, you know, being here with us to, 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 to try to really understand the problems and what we can do. So we have a plan. We have assigned tasks and I, if there's no other comments, then I think we can move on to our next agenda item. Good? All right. All righty. Oh, thank you, Dave, for the claps. Up, everybody wants his parting shot. Should we let him have it?
No.
Dave, we were, we're done. Can we move on? All right. You can call me tomorrow, Dave. All right. So where are we? We are on to other business. How about that? Which is liaison reports. Anyone have liaison reports? I can start. If, Ms. Karen, go ahead.
I'll just quickly update the board that the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee will commence its first meeting next Tuesday, January 12th. So just wanted to let you know that that is moving forward. So we look forward to bringing all those great folks together to start taking a look at all our policies and trainings and things like that. And that's it for that. That's all I have for liaison. I just wanted to let you guys know it's going to start next Tuesday.
Great. Exciting. Anyone else have an update from any of their liaisons, from liaisoning? No? I will let you know that Lorraine, our, our, our intrepid admin, Lorraine has put together a, we're going to do a training, a Zoom training for the chairs of boards and committees at the end of Feb, beginning of February, February 3rd at 7 o'clock and February 4th at 1:30. Normally she, she's done this in the past. We obviously can't do it in person. So if you, if the, I would ask the board, when you speak with your committees, to let them know that the chairs will be invited to that, because I think it'll be really helpful. The school committee meetings, Tony, as you remember, the the school committee and the select board have tried, have been trying to improve our communication, our cross-communications on many things, not least of which is the whole impact of COVID. So meetings between Jim Bedrow, the, Bill Burkett, which always happened, Peter Gates, the chair, and I, as long, as well as Tony, who is the liaison to school committee, one of them, and Nicole Brandalini, who's the, on the school committee. We're going to start meeting tomorrow is the first meeting to just talk about all these, like, things like the memorial bench. How are we going to facilitate those kind of things? So those meetings start tomorrow. So if you have things that you think should be brought for a school committee, let us know. And finally, I wanted to just let you know, EDC informed me that they're withdrawing their CPC application to use the WPA building for a virtual, for a, for a visitor center because they have concluded that they need to. because they have concluded that they need to, they're going to be virtual for a while anyway, and that why don't they get their whole program up and running, and then we can find an appropriate home for it down the road?
Right.
So I just want to let you know that. That's all I have. Any other liaisons? Okay, correspondence, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we received a site plan waiver notification from the planning board related to locating the Situit food pantry at the, the gates, the Old Gate School. The planning board will be reviewing the plan on, at their January 14th meeting. So if anyone out there has an interest in knowing what's going on with that, that would be the time to go. There was a grant report, and I can report that from January 1st, 2020 to date, the town of Situit has received 2.5 million, almost $2.6 million in grants, various grants to aid the town. 1.5, 1.6 million, thereabouts, was COVID-19 related. And that grant total does not include any grants that are in support of our school students. So congratulations to the town for doing such a good job on getting significant grant money. Thank you, Jim, Nancy, and all the other people who do the grants. Finally, we did receive, I think this happens every year, the National Grid Notice of the yearly operational plan, and especially it relates to the various ways that they keep their rights of way cleared. They do some manually, they, they do some with herbicides. Everything has to be filed with the state. It's very carefully done, but if anyone's interested in knowing about that. Would that be on the website, Jim? That letter?
That would actually be on their website.
Oh, okay.
National Grid website.
All right, so if anyone's interested in that, go on the National Grid, National Grid website to look up their yearly operational plan. And that's all I saw in correspondence.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
If I could just add, the correspondence was sent to the board from all of the wind turbine.
Yes.
People?
Yeah.
There were four letters that were sent to you prior to tonight's conversation.
Okay, I, I, I did see it, but I thought since we had had such a lengthy discussion that kind of covered it all, but duly noted.
You don't have to read it, I just want to acknowledge it.
Yeah, no, duly noted.
You've already read it, I don't mean to insinuate that you haven't.
No, 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 I, no, I hear you.
Duly noted, thank you, Lorraine. It's part of the public record.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Got it.
Okay, with that, do we have any motions for approval of meeting minutes? Anybody have that up? I'm on my agenda. We're scrolling.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of December 15th, 2020, is that the date?
That sounds right.
Yes.
By Ms. Conley, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Curran. We finally have a vote. Roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
And then we have the executive session minutes.
Yes. And that was, that was for the same night, right?
Same night, but we're not releasing because the matter's still pending.
Move to accept the executive meeting minutes of December 15th, 2020, but not to be publicly released, since the matter is still pending.
Moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay, our, our next agenda is adjourn and sign documents, but we are going to go into executive session. So I will find that thing that I'm supposed to say. I will remind, Lorraine, do you have, do folks need to come in tomorrow to, to sign things for you?
Yes, I, I have to have things signed tomorrow.
Okay, so if you could please do that, and also there is a financial request made to your Venmo accounts. If you haven't done so, please respond to that for a gift. There was a gift for a memorial gift that the board was going to make, that Lorraine fronted, and she sent you a Venmo, and if you didn't, talk to Lorraine about it tomorrow.
I'm not a Venmo person, so.
I had a feeling the blank stare was why.
I actually sent an email to everyone.
Oh, you did? Okay, good.
I sent an email to everyone.
If I, if it had Venmo in it, I probably ignored it. Tomorrow.
Travelers' checks.
Yeah. So I will then ask for an adjournment from the regular meeting and, and a motion into executive session, because I declare that the board of select must move into executive session pursuant to open, to purpose six of the open meeting law, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real properties known as Lot 17143 Border Street. And I declare an open meeting that have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board of selectmen in connection with this matter. I am looking for a motion to move into executive session.
Move the board of select can go into executive session pursuant to purpose six of the open meeting law to consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real, real properties known as Lot 17143 Border. And I declare that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on negotiating position for the selectmen.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
And I just want to add that we will not be.
And we will not be in an open session. Thank you. I always, never get that right.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you, board. The motion passes 5-0 to the public. Thank you for staying up late with us, and good night, Mr. Darty. And we will now be having a brief pause while Seth.